October the 5th, and I call this meeting of the Village of North Hudson Board of Trustees meeting to order. Let the record show that we began at 7:03. I would ask the clerk to take the roll.
Dr. Caffey?
Here.
Travis Klein?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien-Bergman?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Wecken?
Here.
Zappa?
Thank you. We had a meeting on September 7th that I did not attend. However, I read the meeting minutes carefully and would entertain a motion that they be accepted as written. Thank you, Darryl. Second by Colleen. Thank you. Any edits? Questions? Comments? In favor of accepting the meeting minutes from September 7th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. And I abstain from those, from that vote. We also had a meeting, it was, albeit brief, but we did have a meeting on September 22nd. It was a Wednesday. We met at 8 o'clock. And I would ask someone who was at that meeting to make a motion.
I move approval of the Wednesday, September 22nd, 2010 Special Board Meeting of the Trustees.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any comments or questions? Indicate, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay. It's at this time during the meeting that we ask if there is anyone who would like to make a comment on something that is not on the agenda. Anybody in the audience would like to speak? Please approach the lectern. State your name. Okay. There being none, we'll move on. Item number four, an Eagle Scout project presentation from Joel Harrington and Tom Hagan. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
All right. Also up?
Up, gotta use the podium. Because there's a microphone and a camera on you, son.
That should read, "You get to use the podium."
This past weekend, I did my Eagle project at Ferry Landing. We repainted the bathrooms because on the ceiling, if you were to look, it was chipping off. It was like the paint was chipping away. The ceiling just didn't look all that gray. There's graffiti on the stalls. So my Eagle project was to repaint the ceiling and the walls of the bathhouse. So, and I have before and after pictures of that. If I can get them up here.
Do you have a cord that would plug into?
I wonder if he could spin it around and hit it?
Maybe you can just turn it around.
I could just blow out the screen here.
Just turn it around.
Oh, okay.
Joel, while you're getting that set, did you do this, or did you have a team of?
Oh, it was me and the troop of 168.
Very good.
And the parents of 168. And the other individuals, the parents, like, and like some other kids, even if they weren't in the troop, they would help if they wanted to. Where's one of the cameras?
You can focus off of one of those corner cameras there.
That big, that black thing hanging from the ceiling. Oh, don't, you don't have to go too far. He can, he can zoom in on you.
We should make sure that.
Maybe we should ask him to, if he can do it.
You should be listening.
I can walk around the room.
There we go. Zoom in on you now. Hold still.
Right there.
That's what the ceilings used to work like. Because they gave it a textured ceiling, but they didn't prime the ceiling first. So the texture, this decided didn't want to stay up because all the water damage is chipping away. You could actually, like, take your fingernail and just scrape off the ceiling. It was in that bad a condition. And when we were done with the ceiling, we first primed it and then we painted it so it wouldn't have the chipping. That's that exact same spot, but later.
There you go.
So it's actually the camera in the far corner. Yeah, it's beautiful.
Nice.
Yeah.
And with the walls, they were a gray, and so we painted them gray once again. So before, they were, oops. They were a, the two bathrooms, actually, the men's bathroom was like a blue-gray and the women's was a darker gray. And so that's another view of the bathroom. As you can see, there's more chipping ceiling. It was like a light gray, and we did a darker gray for the bathrooms. So that's the before, and one more after here.
There you go.
Get a little bit darker. We also power washed the walls, so we had them clean. And we made sure to put down drop cloths so we wouldn't get paint in unnecessary places so we wouldn't have a mess.
Very good. So you're all finished?
Yes.
Have you, you haven't had your ceremony yet, have you?
No. That'll be this summer.
That'll be when?
This summer.
This summer?
Yeah, I'm saving it for my graduation party, too. It's like a joint thing.
Yeah, it's gonna be before you're 18, isn't it?
Oh, the ceremony can happen after 18. You just need to have all your requirements done before you're 18.
Okay. Don't ever underestimate the value of that Eagle pin, that Eagle ceremony. When you fill out a resume, no matter what it's for, you make sure you indicate that you are a proud recipient of that Eagle Award.
All right.
Okay? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thanks.
And now it's time for Tom Hagan.
Well, I haven't really started my Eagle project yet. I was to, like, propose my Eagle project. I was going to be assembling and putting in new benches at the Janson Memorial Park. That's like new or whatever. And I need to get ahold of a few more people and make sure I have all of the materials and everything. And I was planning on doing my Eagle project the weekend of the 16th of this month. And, yeah.
Okay. Has this project been approved by your scout master?
Yes.
And the council?
Yeah.
Very good. What, how could you, would you describe these benches for us? What are they going to be made of?
They're gonna be made out of wood, like two-by-fours, but the legs and like the, or the posts for them are gonna be made out of metal that are gonna be cemented into the ground. And, um, yeah. I'll be painting the benches to whatever color that the park board, or I guess you would.
Park board?
Yeah.
That's a good one. That's Ms. O'Brien-Bergman sitting to my left over here.
Yeah.
You on top of this one, Colleen? All right.
We have a meeting on Monday.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Good luck on it.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
And thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Just as a note to anyone else who's out there, which troop are you guys? In the same troop?
Yes.
168. 168. Any of the troops around here who are interested in Eagle project, if you're wondering, come before, talk to our Public Works people, talk to the chief, talk to Gloria, talk to myself, and there are opportunities. There, I just thought of one today as I was going down Sixth Street. So feel free to contact us, because I know one of the hardest things for most Eagle, most of the boys who are looking for that Eagle Award is what can I do for the community? So just a note out there for all the scouts, let us know. We can, I think we can help. Thank you very much, guys. Item number five, storm notification system presentation. Casey?
I think Casey's gonna talk about the siren that goes off in the middle of the night, wakes everybody up to tell us that the storm is over.
How you doing, Casey?
Fine, thanks.
Perhaps one project could be scraping the vegetables off the wall when I'm done here.
I gotta tell you, I get phone calls all the time about.
Well, I appreciate the time to come before you, and I appreciate the invitation. I'd like to not only introduce myself, Casey Swetlik, as the Director for Emergency Support Services, which includes emergency management and the 911 Center for St. Croix County, but I'd like to introduce Kristen Saylor, who is the Emergency Management Coordinator, and Terry Anderson, who is the Emergency Communications Coordinator for the respective Emergency Management and 911 Divisions for the county. They're here hopefully to lend support for this somewhat energetic topic of storm notification. The first article that I provided for you, I think addresses some of the questions related to why do we get the sirens when the storm has seemed to pass? Or why is it when the sky is blue, do we hear the siren? And we never even saw a dark cloud? And that's the difference between a storm-based notification process and a county-based notification process. The National Weather Service back in 2007 somewhat developed a storm-based process. Now, the intent for that approach was for the larger geographical counties to help differentiate certain sections of that county for storm notification. It works extremely well, according to the National Weather Service, in larger counties in Minnesota. Where that presents a challenge, the storm-based approach, is in a smaller county, and St. Croix County actually is a smaller county relative to others, and tracking that storm throughout that county. The National Weather Service still places St. Croix County, for those of you who watch the media, under a watch or a warning. They may track it according to certain communities, but the scroll and the warning announcement is still for the entire county. So my 911 Center reacts to that placement, whether it's a watch or a warning. So even though the storm may be in Hammond, Baldwin, Woodville, or Glenwood, St. Croix County is still under that advisory. So that results in the entire county being activated for notification. We don't track at the 911 Center where that storm is, and more importantly, we don't track where it's expected to go. We simply don't have the equipment, we don't have the resources, and we don't have the training. In fact, I think one would even question meteorologists in their ability to track storms. So my concern from a 911 Center standpoint is not placing the dispatchers in a position of attempting to track where that storm is. So two things can result in the activation of the sirens. Number one is the National Weather Service placing the county under a severe thunderstorm warning or a tornado warning. The other is a request from law enforcement or a trained weather spotter telling us there's definitely something going on in my community, you need to activate the sirens. We do so not only for that community, but we also do for the entire county. That's the county-based warning system that we currently have adopted. So that can also then result in the blue sky overhead, but yet in another part of the county, not the case. Certainly in the early days of August, that was the situation where we had a tremendous amount of rainfall and we had a flood warning on the eastern part of the county, but the western part of the county remained unscathed. The entire county was notified of the warning, but yet only a part of it was actually affected. So I certainly appreciate the concerns about the warning sirens going off. The intent of the warning sirens is not to tell someone to take shelter, it's to tell someone to be aware of what's going on. Now, that might be at 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon. The intent of the sirens is always to get the citizenry, the outside citizenry, to go inside and tune in as to what's going on. It's then their decision as to whether or not they seek shelter or they remain in tune with what's happening. So that's the intent of the warning siren, and I understand it. It wakes me up. I live within eyesight of one up in Richmond, so I understand that and I respect that, but the intent of the warning system is just to get the people, the citizens, to actually be aware of what's going on. Questions about the two different systems so far? All right. I think it's important that you understand what we as a 911 Center actually do during severe weather. The second sheet is just an outline of what happens in the 911 Center. It's sort of checkpoint system of what we need to do. Sometimes there are three dispatchers on duty and sometimes there are four. Often, there's no more than four, though. We know that whenever the sirens go off, you would not believe how many people dial 911 to find out what's going on. It's a tremendous strain on the 911 Center when that happens. So the education, again, is to get people to tune into the media and not necessarily use 911 to find out what's going on. When it's a watch, there's a, just a two-item checklist of what we need to do, but when there's a severe weather warning, you can see there's a seven-item checklist of what the dispatchers need to do, and that then becomes interrupted with phone calls and actual emergencies, if you can imagine if the weather is severe. We're dealing with a lot of downed trees, power lines, maybe some fire situations. So it does become a very active time in the 911 Center. So that just outlines what we do there. There is a belief that the warning sirens are going off all the time. That third page, I ended it with August 13th. I did a presentation for the City of Hudson, and that's when I last calculated the data. There's, have since been a couple more activations of the sirens. From a warning standpoint, there have been 19 from June 15th to August 13th. And as far as, that's for severe thunderstorm warning and for tornado warning, there have been four. It talks about when the sirens are actually activated, just for a severe thunderstorm warning and a tornado warning. And then, of course, it's important to compare what we do versus what other counties do. That last stapled page outlines our neighbors and is a, somewhat of a survey to compare what we do for severe weather versus what other communities do for severe weather as Any questions?
Casey, I appreciate you being here.
Yes.
One of my esteemed colleagues on this August board regularly was beating me up over the issue of sirens going off when he thought the storm had already passed. So I thought to get you here and explain the county-based system maybe would keep him from beating me up. So this is a preservation.
I understand. We have two systems in place. One is a teletype system, which connects us nationwide, and the National Weather Service can use that to trigger the warning announcement. Or we have a over-the-counter device that we actually bought at Radio Shack that is keyed in on the certain code for the county. When the National Weather Service triggers that, we get the alarm and the 911 Center telling us what it is. So those are the two mechanisms that we use to actually activate the sirens. We react to the National Weather Service. There have been times where we have called them because we haven't been under a warning and we think we should be, and then they focus a little more attention on our area. But for the most part, we react to what they tell us. And unfortunately, sometimes that's delayed. But it's our best resource. Yes?
Being the esteemed colleague, it causes me to think Darryl might be talking about.
I thought he was talking about me, Stan.
Oh, hell, no. I mean, no, I've been up pretty good, but I'm curious as the, as to the county-based system, you know, I mean, you know, I get stuff over the internet, I get stuff over the TV when it works, because sometimes when it's raining, you can't get television with, if you have satellite. You know, I'm concerned over the county-based system that, you know, I mean, and we have a wonderful weather barrier called St. Croix River, and that splits a lot of storms. You know, I've always said we have the dome over North Hudson or the dome over Hudson. And, you know, I'm born and raised here and watched it for years, and it seems like all the time when we finally get our warning, it is an all-clear, more or less than, you know, or you get one every 15 minutes, and it's confusing, you know? So I'm concerned that the citizens, you know, I mean, hell, we got, I see in the middle of the day, the kids come out of the house and look, you know? So, you know, all right, granted that the system is working according to the same, or the county plan, that, all right, we're looking to see if there is actually a storm. But I'm also concerned that we have people that, you know, oh, there goes the damn sirens again, and we go back to normal, and we're gonna have something come through like they did in Hugo and a couple places in Minnesota, where people didn't pay attention and all of a sudden they get swatted pretty good. So that's the biggest concern I have, is that we're not the boy calling wolf at the time, and that's why I was wondering why the county chooses to set them all off. You know, I mean, we can hear, you know, I mean, Bayport go off, and you can, you know, I can hear them go. I mean, I know the system and how they set them, and I'm just concerned that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have some people get hurt by having the blue sky sirens.
And I understand your platform, and I certainly respect your position. We use the National Weather Service for our source. We also have a component of our policy in which law enforcement can activate those sirens at their request. We certainly don't argue with law enforcement should they ask for them to be activated. So in a case where a storm is coming through a community and the National Weather Service hasn't placed that county or community under an advisory, a warning advisory, law enforcement, certainly at their discretion, has the ability to tell us, activate our sirens. And that has happened. But outside of that, coming through with a weather system in, say, the Hammond area, if that's where it surfaces, or it comes from the south, which is in typical, but it can, we trigger them all off, and I think we do that, number one, because when you're, when you're watching your television, if you have a signal, and you see that the National Weather Service has placed the county under a warning, if we don't set the siren off in that community, I think the first concern from that citizen will be, why didn't my siren go off? And then we'll be hearing the opposite side of that related to the, I don't rely on my siren because it's not going off, even though I saw that the county was under a warning. So I think that's part of the influence as to why the county takes a county-wide approach. The other is simply the unpredictability and the inability, from the 911 Center standpoint, to tell where that storm is going, or even where it's coming from. We don't have the resources to commit to sitting in front of a computer and tracking a storm and determining where that storm is going to go and trying to warn those citizens in advance. I think that opens us up for a lot of liability concern related to whether or not that community was notified. I certainly respect your platform, and I understand it. I just simply don't know of a solution that can address your concerns, but also address those concerns of the citizens that expect to be notified, even if they're inconvenienced by having to listen to the siren for a minute and then tuning in and finding out, and taking ownership, quite honestly, as to what the actual situation is. I've used, and I've received many, many phone calls, I've somewhat used an example of putting on your seatbelt in your car. Even though it's the law, you wear your seatbelt in the event you get in an accident. But yet the mentality of a seatbelt isn't crying wolf because you rarely get into an accident, you still put it on. And in my opinion, the siren could be an inconvenience, but it's yet empowering you then to find out what's going on and making that decision as to whether or not I need to take shelter or stand outside and look at the clouds, or the blue sky.
It's an antistate issue, then.
I also wish to offer, we went live today with the new website for the county. On our, on our emergency management website, we will have links as to weather and announcements for emergency weather warnings and watches and help to define why the sirens go off when they go off. So hopefully that will help clear up some questions as well.
Would you make sure that Doug has that website so that the public can see what that is?
Yep. It's the emergency management, like, through the county, but I can certainly get to that.
I've been on that, the county website, and I know that if there is an emergency, it gets frustrating trying to get to the site where you want to be. So that would be helpful. How long does that siren actually go? It seems like it goes on for five minutes.
It's a minute.
One minute.
It cycles for a minute.
Am I right, folks? It's the longest minute you've ever experienced.
Is it three minutes? Mark? Okay, I'm sorry, Mark, correct me if it's three minutes.
Three. Okay.
You know it was a long time, huh, George?
Yeah, I know it was longer than a minute.
Three hours in the middle of the night.
I have a question.
Yes?
When law enforcement triggers the request for the siren, is that community-based or you still vote the whole county?
We start at that community. The sirens are activated according to our tower positions throughout the county. We have different towers in different communities, so it's a checklist that the dispatcher goes through. So say, for example, the police department in Hammond wanted their sirens notified. We start with Hammond, but then we also hit the entire county. So we stick with the county-based system, simply because we don't know where that storm is going that's in Hammond. And it's, that's even more crucial because it's obviously off the radar, so to speak, of the National Weather Service. So that's even, in my opinion, that's even more crucial than that we notify the county because we just simply don't know where that storm is going, and neither does the National Weather Service. So it starts in the community where it's.
No, no, usually our weather comes from the west.
Yeah.
So you think if it starts in Hammond, or if you're notified for Hammond, that we've already had it?
Usually. And again, whether, and someone spoke of the liability earlier. I'm not about to put that liability on my 911 Center. You talk about the Hugos and you talk about the Red Wings just went through a major issue related to their sirens. It's the first thing that's looked at when a storm hits, and it's not just looked at by citizens, but also litigation specialists. So in my opinion, the warning, the county-based system provides ownership for the citizens of the county.
I would underscore that from the standpoint of the county, and I can tell you that we are not about to accept the liability of picking and choosing who's gonna get notified. It's just a liability issue that the county is not gonna take on.
And I'll also, if I could interject.
And if it wasn't the National Weather Service that issued a warning?
Maybe even more so, as Casey just said, because then there's even less information where it's coming from and where it's going. We don't have the resources to do that. The dispatch center is located in an area of the government center where they don't even have access to windows. So not only do they not have the technology, they don't even have the visual ability to look outside.
And I'll add, there's a community close by, River Falls, they take ownership of their own sirens. And if a community wishes to accept that liability and responsibility, it's certainly a template that's being done in River Falls right now. River Falls, the sirens in the city of River Falls are not activated by the county at all, they're activated by the city on the authority of law enforcement. And law enforcement then makes that decision, that game-day decision, as to whether or not they're triggered. And I look at Mark shaking his head right now, and I think that's the reason.
Want to make that call, Mark?
That question, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Most of our storms come from the west or east. You get some pulse positives, as you mentioned. But since most of our weather is coming from Minnesota, are we getting, the ones that we are gonna get, are we getting the warnings then? Because it's coming from Minnesota. The storms are in Minnesota, coming this way.
Yeah, I think.
Are we getting the warnings we need?
I think those seem to be tracked, if you look at the radar, you know, from not only the National Weather Service, but our local news medias. I think those seem to be tracked a little bit better than the ones that pop from other I'll agree, though, it's, once it hits the river, it either seems to dissipate or split or grow in intensity, and you can never really predict where it's going to go. And that's part of, again, why we rely on the National Weather Service to give us that warning or local law enforcement. It's just something that, just because Washington County's under it, we can't jump in front of it and say, well, we're next, so let's trigger them now, because soon as we do that, it's gonna dissipate or split. So we just wait for the word from National Weather Service?
I noticed in the list of the weather events that blizzards are not included in this.
Correct.
I'm not looking for sirens to go off in the middle of a blizzard, but any reason for that?
I just simply think there's not been a push for it. I don't know if anybody that has raised a concern related to the blizzard. There's out, there's been a time, up until about two years ago, where the sirens didn't even go off on that monthly test during the winter because of a concern about ice buildup in the sirens and then activating them during the wintertime, maybe doing some damage to either the siren itself or the oscillation of the siren. But in the last couple of years, we've been triggering them year-round for the warnings for the test patterns. But blizzards, no, there's been no push.
Okay. We're not pushing, Casey. No, no, no.
I was gonna say, what the hell?
I was gonna say, what the hell's a blizzard? Five minutes of snow, or five hours of snow?
Really imminent danger where people...
Yeah, that urgency doesn't seem to accompany a blizzard. Anything else? Well, I thank you for the time, and I certainly wish to offer my services, should you have any questions or concerns from not only the board itself, or your citizenry, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to field those whenever they come forward. Thank you.
I would echo Stan's comment, and that is the old crying wolf story metaphor, if we will. And I know it gets to the point, oh, there it goes again, and nobody pays attention to it here in the village. So just, you know, before you push that button for the whole county, keep that in mind, that someday there's gonna be one that's serious, and nobody's gonna pay attention to it.
I guess on the flipside of that, George, if it doesn't go off, where's the liability?
I understand that. I understand that completely. I'm just sharing that, I share that only as a concern.
Thing is, is when you hear that there's lots of places that you can, other resources that you can get, there's radio stations, there's whatever it is that give you the precise location of any kind of really violent storm.
I think our point is, by the time they go off here, the storm has already passed, and our danger level has already been up there, and now it's going down by the time the sirens go off.
Right, Mary.
So that's, that's what I think we're saying in this municipality, is that by the time that siren goes off, the storm has already passed us. If we were gonna get hit hard, the siren would've been too late.
You know, I, we've had enough stor-, you know, I don't know, I would argue a little bit against that, because I remember this year, we've had a lot of storms that have come through here, and that siren has gone off numerous times, and I've, you know, I see one coming from Stillwater about that time, or whatever. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I do think at least some of the time, we're getting some advance warning. That's my gut feeling by looking at the... I read that. What's happened in the last, last summer, anyway. Well, thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad, nice to see you all. I'll be back. Bye. Next item on the agenda, item 6A, is the President's comments. I have a few things that I'd like to bring on the table. One of them is the September 9th edition of the Hudson Star Observer had a very good article. It's Hudson, North Hudson compare well on taxing and spending. I hope you've seen it. If you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate to call the Hudson Star Observer, I mean, don't hesitate to call, and we'll talk about. There was only one area that Gloria and I did discuss, and that had to do with fire and ambulance spending. Had to do with a formula, I'm sure, but the rest of it was very nice to see. We do our darndest here as a board, both the finance board and the finance committee, as well as the whole board, to keep our taxes in check. And we are about to enter into budget meetings, trying to set the budget and keep within the required guidelines. It is a considerable challenge, and we'll talk more about it later.
Can I make a comment about that?
Please do, Jeff.
You know, Doug, thanks for, you know, I don't know if you were directly involved in that article or not, or who wrote it, but, you know, it was an interesting article for me. I learned a lot about that, about our spending, by listening to that budget, and, or reading about that budget analysis, and I thought, too, it was worthwhile. And I hope you continue doing that sort of thing. If we get out of line, I want you to publish that as well. The good news and the bad news is important for the residents, but I thought it was, I thought it was well-written.
Yeah.
I thought it was worthwhile reading. So thank you, thank you for that, Doug, on behalf of the newspaper. The next item I'd like to talk about very briefly is something that occurred on Sunday morning, the 26th of September. I was awakened by what sounded like a cannon going off at quarter of seven in the morning. At exactly seven o'clock, it sounded like a howitzer, or maybe a Gatling gun going off. In fact, a friend of mine at the YMCA who lives in Stone Point said he heard it as well. Of course, my immediate thought was the Hudson Rod and Gun Archery Club. Told my wife, I says, after breakfast, I'm gonna pay a visit to the Hudson Rod and Gun Club and find out what's going on. I'm really glad I did, because I'm here to tell you that it wasn't the Hudson Rod, Gun, and Archery Club.
It's really goose season.
That morning, if you were up at quarter of seven in the morning, and if you were near Lake Maloo, you would've experienced a lake that was as smooth as glass. There wasn't a wind in the air. It was as still as could be, and it was the opening of duck season. And the duck hunters were out where the Willow River meets Lake Maloo, and they were out getting their ducks. I did go out to the archery, or the Rod and Gun Club, and I got the brochure, and it's very clear, shooting hours, Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Okay? So you folks who thought the gun club was at fault for those really early-morning cannons, wasn't them at all. They didn't ask me to say that, I just wanted to make you a stand.
I would like, there's a correction. It was early goose season, it was, duck season just started Saturday.
Goose.
So you were early goose season, so I mean, it was the goose hunters, not the duck hunters, and...
Well, I apologize to the duck hunters.
And they were out there this Saturday, because I was down in the river fishing, and they went off, all right, that's a goose hunter, because it was a 10-gauge. Those are duck hunters, because it's a 12-gauge. So just, just a point of correction, it was the, you know, the head of Maloo gets some good hunting, and, you know, a lot of us have hunted there for years, and it's, it was early goose at that day.
Okay. I got the, I got the bird wrong, but...
That's all right, no, it's, that's the government.
Sunday was a busy day. In the evening, around 5:00, I got a call from a resident who lives down on Lake Maloo, saying that the lake was extremely high, all of a sudden, what are you gonna do about it? So I went out and started bailing with my little...
I'm sure.
Long and short of it was that the lake had gotten very high. The fact of the matter was, the dam couldn't keep up with the amount of water that was coming down the Willow River. It is under constant adjustment. In fact, there is a siren that goes off down at the dam that sounds just like a squad car. It only lasts for about three or four seconds, but it's enough to frighten the residents in that area. So that siren was going off continuously, or not, I shouldn't say continuously, on and off, from about 5:00 on. And it was to adjust, what it does is it adjusts the height of the dam. So rest assured, they're on top of things. I did talk with the supervisor who was in charge of that, and all he could say was, that little dam is doing its darndest.
Okay. Little dam doing its darnd-, okay. Well, I tried, Terry. I thought I'd get a round of applause or something, or somebody'd snicker, but... Actually, that's all I've got for right now. I turn it over to Gloria for the administrators' comments.
With the budget deadline fastly approaching, I'm gonna ask if the finance committee members could write down the dates of February 20th and 27th to see if they are available.
Which dates?
February.
I wrote a two here.
Thursday, we'll get out.
October. October 20th and the 27th for the special finance meeting.
Or either.
Preferably both, but we'll see how it goes.
Those are Wednesdays. Okay.
And we could do it like 9:00 in the morning. Pardon?
9:00?
Yes, 9:00 a.m. That's it.
Oh, that's all? Okay. I noticed that our village clerk has a comment to make, so Becky, would you, like, share it with us?
Thank you. We have an election coming up on November 2nd, which is the first Tuesday of the month. Generally, our board meetings are also the first Tuesday of the month, board and finance, so we need to look at an alternate date for the board and finance meeting for November. I would also just like to mention briefly, as part of my comment, that there is some updated information on the website regarding the election. I'm trying to keep that up to date and add additional information whenever possible. There's information, and I would invite any resident who is interested in either registering to vote, getting information on voting, or inquiring about voting by absentee, to check our website. There are some downloadable forms, as well as dates and times and the deadlines for registration and for absentee voting. So that is what I have regarding the election, and then if we want to determine a date for the November board meeting and finance, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
In the discussion we had earlier today, Gloria, we were talking about typically what we've done is move to the next Tuesday, but budget being what it is, and deadlines being what they are, I'm gonna turn it over to Gloria, and who's gonna tell us a little bit about our schedule, and why we're going to propose that we meet on the Thursday of that first week in November. Do you want to talk about some of our budget schedule?
Sure. If you still have your timeline for the budget process, you'll see that November 5th is the Friday that I need to get the publication to the paper. It needs to come out that next Thursday, and then there's a 15-day requirement that it's before that it's approved. So in order to meet that deadline, we would need to meet on the 4th of November instead of, I think, the 9th.
Yeah.
I don't remember which day it was, but, yeah, if we could meet on the 4th.
Thank you.
I'll move that we have a, the November board meeting be Thursday, November the 4th, regular time schedule. Just entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen.
And that would also include finance, so we should back that up to 6:00.
Okay, finance.
Six and seven?
Yeah.
Yep.
Finance and board at, on that date. Any discussion? All in favor of changing the Thursday finance and board meeting to November the 4th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Becky, it's done. That's when we're meeting. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is, as you have, see it in front of you, a temporary amendment to the Class B, Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages, et cetera, et cetera, for the Malloans Fall Motorcycle Run. And the event will take place on October 9th from 10:00 to 2:00. I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
You want him to read the whole motion?
You want him to read the whole motion, or is that, that's what you want?
Start reading.
Okay. Move that the Class B, Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages, and a tax getting with this for Malloin be temporarily amended for an event taking place 9 October 2010 with the following conditions. No wonder they didn't want to finish this. Area outside of the building be completely enclosed with secure, not vinyl fence, accessed only from within the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced-in area. Number two, use outside only with specific permission of the village board for each particular date and event. The 9 October 2010 event will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., or 10:00 to 14:00, for those who use military time. Owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot is fenced during the time of the event. Number four, for Hut-, North Hudson Police Officers, and three county deputies, two be on duty during the hours of the event, at the owner's expense, to be billed by the owner to the, by the village. Having the additional officers on foot at the event will provide adequate visibility to deter unlawful activities. Number five, owner to provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Number six, Wisconsin Street North, from Sixth Street North to Third Street North, to be closed through traffic from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with an open corridor for emergency vehicles maintained. In parents, surrounding neighbors to be notified in advance by the village. Actual detour, times of detour routes are at the discretion of the commanding NHPD officer on the scene. Number seven, payment for the village services must be paid within 30 days of the event. That would be my motion.
Oh, very good, Stan. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll take Colleen's over here. Any discussion?
Just an inquiry, will the presiding officer restate the motion prior to the vote, or...
Not to do that.
Not to do that. I can see that the chief has done some background work, and that's included in here. And to my recollection, we haven't had any problems there in many a year. We're doing all right. Any questions or comments from the board, or the audience? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Item number eight, adoption of ordinance 6-2010, amending chapter 82, street sidewalks and other public places. Article 1 and general, section 82-6, street and sidewalk excavations and openings of the village code approval is requested. The ordinance that you see printed in front of you shows that there have been some changes. I believe, Gloria, this is mostly just cleanup of the wording.
I, actually, we received this work from Cedar Corp., and if you'd like to...
Kevin is nodding as indicates he is just so anxious to talk to us about this this evening. Kevin?
You know, Kevin, can I interrupt you for a second? Just a little history on this. You know, we had worked a little bit on the permit for opening up streets and excavations, and we wanted to make a modification to the bond requirement, because we felt that was onerous for some, and maybe even not enough for others, depending upon the work. So we looked at it to do that, and in looking at that, we found a lot of antiquated language about the engineering specs, and that's when we said Cedar should probably take a look at it and update all these engineering specs. So there are some significant changes here. It's not just cleaning up language.
So it's not just cleanup?
It's changes, but it's changes to things that didn't make any sense anymore. Like we had in our ordinance, a requirement to have kerosene lanterns, you know, on the other, around the hole. So we've changed that to, to update the language.
Some of us are old enough to remember those kerosene lamps.
Yeah, well, you might have some in your garage that Kevin could use when we need them, yeah.
You still have some.
So anyway, that was just an introduction to why Cedar got involved and made extensive changes to it, because the language was very antiquated, the engineering language.
And so, one of the other things that kind of stood out there was some reference in here about street commissioner. We've actually changed that to State Director of Public Works, we thought that would fit better scenario for the village. And like what Terry has alluded to, there's a lot of information in here that did seem somewhat outdated. So we've gone through and added quite a bit of additional language in here, more specific, some of the items with excavating, backfilling, what those requirements would be, and once the street is put back in place, what kind of thicknesses the village would like to enforce, how much asphalt, how much aggregate base course. There is some verbiage in here about concrete pavement. I mean, the village really doesn't have any of those pavements in place, but there is some verbiage in here for, at a later date. If there are some improvements around the village, it does require concrete. And also, there's additional paragraph in regards to, the village can actually take the project on and do the repairs, and charge that to whoever's responsible for doing the excavation of the street opening, so. I will open it up to any que- I will open it up to any questions that the village board members may have.
George, so we can discuss this, I'll move approval of ordinance number 06-2010, an ordinance amending municipal code for the village of North Hudson.
I'll second, please, good.
Thank you, gentlemen. Did, was this run by Public Works at all, or?
Yeah, we did look at it last month's, last month's meeting. So, they're recommending approval.
Yeah, Public Works looked at it and recommends approval. Okay. Anybody else?
George, you want to recognize someone from the audience?
I don't recognize her at all. Good, please.
Mayor Beth Rebecca, and I live on Seventh Street, and I just had two questions. One is, does this apply to any new streets, or old streets, or all streets, or, and does it include like the sewer, I mean, not the sewer, but the street drain system and stuff?
It's mainly if, say, a contractor needs to come in and do some repair, it's, you know, probably pretty limited, certain distance, you know, opening-wise, 20 to 30 feet wide.
This, this particular ordinance only refers to when you're going to put a hole in the street that's not there already.
Okay. Because, and the reason I asked this question, my follow-up question was, I noticed different parts of the village have different kind of base and sand basin stuff, and in some places they're moving towards, you know, doing curving and drainage for everything, whereas the street naturally might have better drainage than sticking it all in a thing. So, I was just, if it was going to be moving towards everything uniformly a certain way without considering if there's a sand basin or this, then I was going to ask more questions.
Actually, the, the title of this section, 82.6, is "Street and Sidewalk Excavations and Openings."
Yes.
So, it is based primarily, this is my understanding, so I want you two to correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding of this is, we have to open something up, we have to damage or destroy a piece of sidewalk because, and this is to make sure that it gets put back.
In a good way.
Yes, and it has nothing to do with curb and gutter and drainage and all the rest of that.
Well, that's why I just thought I'd check, because having been on the plan commission, sometimes different things mean different things, so I just thought I'd check it.
And Mayor Beth, you know that what got me here, sitting on this board, is curb and gutter.
I know, I know. So, I thought you'd be the first to ask, but just in case, I thought I would clarify for myself, because, you know, as long as I'm sitting here, it might understand.
Sure.
Yeah, it's just basically replacing kind, you know, what's out there currently right now.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Anybody else? If there are no other questions or comments, because this is an ordinance, I'll ask for a roll call vote, and Stan will start with you.
Yes.
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 George, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next one we have is ordinance number 7-2010. This is amending Chapter 86 subdivisions.
Just in case you wanted to talk.
Mike's going. Mike, why don't you give us an overview of this, and then we'll be able to make a motion and ask you questions.
Maybe prior to him doing that, I'll move, so it's available for discussion. I'll move approval of ordinance number 07-2010, an ordinance amending the municipal code for the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
For discussion.
Thank you, Stan.
Okay. That was the only item that came before the plan commission on the September 15th meeting, was amending this Chapter 86 subdivision ordinance. Council explained that, that Chapter 86 should be amended to reduce the burden on property owners who want to adjust their lot lines or sell a piece of land to an adjoining landowner. And section 86.4 is convenience between adjoining properties. Currently, landlords have to follow the subdivision process to go through this. As you may recall, we had a case involving this nine months ago, or whatever it was. And so, the village attorney and village engineer put together a few recommendations for the plan commission to discuss, and we pretty much liked what they had on version number two with, with one minor change. And, and so, this, this one would actually get the plan commission out of the loop on this particular type of a deal. It would require a landowner to submit an application and a certified survey map to the village, or to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator would review this submission to verify compliance with zoning ordinances, and has the option to send it to the village engineer if he feels that needs to be done. And then it goes to the village board for final approval, if, if they approve it. The other things is, there would be no additional parcels created, so a person could take his lots and keep them, adjust the lot lines, keep the same number or fewer lots. If they want to make more lots out of it, go through the subdivision process. This, this is just to streamline the simple things. The lots established before 1987 would have the pre-1987 minimum areas, that each of the lots would have to be 10,000 square feet for a one-family home, 12,000 for two-family, whereas post-1987 lot sizes are 13,000 and 15,000. Setbacks are all the same, there's no change in any of that.
No, no cost to them for that, or?
That'd be correct. There'd be, there'd be no cost to the landowner to do that, is what the...
The new process.
The motion was, we got approved.
If I remember correctly, there was a lot of discussion about this. In fact, this has been back and forth between, I think Terry, you've seen this a few times, and Mike has seen it with the plan commission, has been really working on this over quite a period of time. And this is the culmination of those efforts.
Yeah, and it was prompted by a surveyor who was representing a citizen who came, I think, talked to Becky, I think, and said, you know, brought to our attention that there'd been a change in state law, that where they, it's a little ambiguous, but where the requirements have to be less onerous for a simple lot line adjustment between two parcels, adjoining parcels. Or a sale between one property owner to another adjoining. Any kind of transfer, whether it's a sale, or just an adjustment, a lot line, no money, changing hands, any kind of transfer of one piece of land to the neighboring parcel. As I recall, after we hashed out, the plan commission was unanimous on approving what's before you.
Approving this version.
Yes.
There's just one very minor change that was recommended by the village engineer that didn't make it onto the copy that you have, and that would be the heading, section 86-3, where it says divisions not constituting subdivisions. And Cedar Corporation had suggested that we change the word divisions to transfers. So, that might be a change that we would want to make based on the recommendation.
I think we did talk about that, too, at the plan commission. Okay. I just didn't have it on my notes. And it didn't end up on the paper, yeah.
And what is the significance of that change?
I wasn't opposed to it, but Cedar was the one who recommended it.
It's the way we were looking at it, is since these technically are divisions, land divisions, we were just like, in lieu of putting transfers, is the way we were looking at it.
Transfer to me says, I'm transferring a title from me to you.
And you are, on a small piece of land.
That's what it is.
Okay. Well, I say that because that's just what it means to me, and that's what it means here.
You would agree with Cedar's clarification of the language there.
Yeah, would. Don't go away, Mike. Any comments from the board members? Questions? Okay, do a roll call vote, we'll start with you, Mark.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mike. Next item on the agenda is?
Plan commission update. There's nothing more to say other than, that was the only item of business we had last month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Boy, a lot of work went into that one, didn't it?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Item number 11 is the Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations. And we did meet at 6:00, and there were some items that we will bring before you, not the least of which, and the very first one, is an agreement to pay our bills. Item A.
I'll move approval of the September 2010 non-recurring claims totaling $49,637.29.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Jim. Any discussion on paying our bills? This is a budgetary item, involves money, so Stan will start with a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
It's done. Next item on the agenda is B, library budget presentation, and we have a guest here, Roy Schoberg, the library board president.
Half the audience is here.
You mean, half the board?
No, I mean, I didn't think I was ever going to get done bringing chairs out for these guests.
I brought in some local talent, Rob Howard.
Yeah, hello, everyone.
Hello, Rob. At the grand opening on Saturday, someone came through with a video machine, and they have a three-minute clip, so I figured we could work three minutes in, and then I'll avoid giving you all the pictures, so we'll just see the video clip. But I'll, I think I'll let him start that all up, and then I'll just start with my, my remarks here. You're going to need a table, too? Or is it, no, works with that thing, right? Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come in front of all of you and make my first presentation as the president. I succeed one of your own, Jim O'Connor, who served so well in that capacity for so many years. At the grand opening, Mr. O'Connor wasn't able to make it. We had scheduled the grand opening so that he would be there, and then he had a vacation that got delayed, and he couldn't be there, so that was kind of tragic. But I was able to be there, and it was a very interesting day. I reflected on this historic moment. It was 106 years before that our own WH Phipps, of the Phipps Center, of the Phipps Foundation, all that that started, he opened up the library 106 years ago, after having gone to New York and convincing one, Andrew Carnegie, to make a contribution. So, the last time a new library facility was opened in this town, it was opened by Mr. Phipps. And I felt that I was in pretty humbled company to say, okay, the next person up was Roy Schoberg. And it should have been Jim O'Connor, but, you know, it's just that, that's the way it works out. I had one other real lucky event in my life, and that's when I caught my biggest fish. I was out fishing on Lake Michigan with six people, and the first five people caught smaller fish, my number was up, and I caught the big fish. So, it's, you have to be in the right place at the right time. So, what Rob's now doing is warming up just that three-minute video, which was filmed on Saturday. Show of hands, how many people were able to make it down there? Yeah, okay. Good. You want me to give the, okay. And you all know Rob Howard. Test one.
Little red light on?
It's a red light on, yeah. Testing one, two? Test one, two, test one, two. It's going to be music pretty soon. Okay, you can all hear. Okay, it's rolling. Time entrance. We invited Reagan to our council, is it Reagan that? The children weren't too scared, they still came. He said the quickest speeches you'll ever hear the mayor or myself have. There's your old Robert Howard. And we took a picture of a bunch of the folks that showed up. People stayed for the food. Good stuff. And we kept reading books. Computer check on us. We had some local music talent. It's kind of like, we have our own twin towers, we have the Phipps Center, and then we have this library, and it's pretty, pretty impressive.
I might add, too, that while I was speaking, I, we awarded a cash award to new logo and slogan winners, and Mayor Beth Rebecca's husband, David Mataya, won the logo award. So, I think North Hudson is immensely represented.
Designer, so, anyone needs a designer.
Thanks, Rob. And now Rob is going to power up a PowerPoint that I put together for this presentation. But, you know, things are real positive, and when Rob gets to the PowerPoint, he'll scroll through the slides, because we don't need to look at them. We can just start to talk about the, the good news and the excitement that's showing up in numbers. So, the first slide we're going to get to is our new people coming into our library. And look at this. July 9th is the lighter blue, July of 2009 is the lighter blue, and then July of 2010 is the darker, darker blue. It's, it's more than 100% increase over last year, but we, of course, thought this must be a fluke, let's try it one more year. And so, the next year, I mean, the next month, I'm sorry, August, same thing. Every single one of our communities, 100% increase. And then, I don't have a chart up, but I do have now the numbers for September, and once again, 100% increase in new card registrations, which is good news in lots of respects. Because what it could mean, what it could mean is that people from our four municipalities are no longer going to River Falls as much, or to Somerset, or New Richmond. Now, I have nothing against those libraries, other than, when they go to those other libraries, guess what? We get to write out a check. Out of our budget, we pay those libraries. If our people stay home, we don't write out those checks. So, that's just a word for the wise. Poor Rob is in charge of our public relations and communications, and it's his job to get that message out for everybody to stay home now at our own library, because it's a real good cost savings. Next slide, Rob. Well, in addition to new card registrations, what are the materials? The materials are our traffic, if you will, it's the number of sales, if you will. So, each of these is a item checked out, either over the internet, but they've come through our library. You can see in 2010, this year that I'm trying to brag about a little bit, we have a blip. Of course, that's what happens when you're closed for six to seven weeks. You can't check out. check out a single thing. So that's that six to seven weeks of down. Next year, we're anticipating three-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, and that's on the conservative side, because generally, we've been advised by Eau Claire that when a new library opens, it's gonna be a twenty percent increase. So a twenty percent increase gets us up, you know, a little bit over the four-hundred-thousand-dollar level from the three-forty-five. Next slide. Well, all those things are increasing, but we've, did, we have maintained one thing nice and steady, and that is, we don't hire anybody new. So we've been at this nine, and barely up to ten this year, that number of full-time equivalents operating this library, and it's like heading into the Christmas season, you know that the rush is here, and you don't add to staff. And so it's, it's starting to break down some of our efficiencies. Some, one of the things that happens is that people get online and they have us hold a book for them, and as long as we can process that hold in time, that book is gonna be there when they arrive. Well, guess what? We don't get to it all the time, and then it's released to somebody else, because the computer doesn't register that it's been checked out from us. So we're, yes, we're operating a very efficient shop there, but it's starting to have some consequences. So, let's go to the next slide. What happens, here's some, one of those consequences that we see, is that in order to get the work done, to catalog things, put things back on the shelves, we have to say to the staff, you, you can't be with patrons anymore, you now have to do this homework, if you will. So we have to shut our doors, and we have our doors shut until eleven o'clock in the morning, until eleven o'clock in the morning. Meanwhile, River Falls is open at nine. So some of these, of this pressure that I think is happening out there, is that the young mothers who come to our doors, and they rattle on the door, and I'm on the inside, and I'm saying, sorry, we're locked, where are they gonna go? They now have two hours to go over to River Falls and have their children there. Our, when our doors don't open until eleven o'clock, it's almost lunchtime when those young kids come in. So that's a problem. The River Falls, at sixty-two hours, their average, that's where we should be, we're at forty-eight point five. Forty-eight point five. And it's, it's kind of like we've gotten used to that, because we've been there for a while. And I think what's gonna happen over the next year is there's gonna be more people like the ones in this room right now that are saying, that's not good enough. We want our patrons to be able to get in there sometime, maybe on a Saturday afternoon. Right now, we close at one o'clock on Saturday. Or if you're unemployed and you want to come in on a Sunday, we're not open at all on Sunday. And you can see that River Falls outmatches us there. We did beat River Falls in football, though, so that's a good thing. Next slide. So, what's happened? You know, we signed this joint agreement, and it saves everybody money, and it's a good thing. But here we are, this new facility, it's enhanced, and I'll tell you a little bit about how wonderful the deal is that we secured this facility for. It's, it's wonderful, but the rent goes up, of course, and we have so much more square footage, you saw the beautiful video. We have saved for this rainy day, though. We've saved about two-hundred-thousand dollars of disposable surplus for this, for this time period. We're using up about fifty thousand of that year, above this year. As we, last year, when we set this budget, we never knew we were gonna be in this building. So now we're blowing through fifty thousand of that two-hundred already. Next year, without any budget increase by any of our partners, we'll blow through another hundred-and-thirty-five thousand to a hundred-and-fifty thousand, except that the Friends, one of our volunteer organizations, are gonna pump in fifteen thousand to help stop that bleeding. So we have a major crisis here. It's the truck that's facing me. I accepted this job, I was appointed by Dean Knutson himself. He sat me down and tried to educate me on the, on all the finances. What I couldn't learn from Dean, I got from Jim O'Connor. And the truck is this big, and we're gonna run out of money pretty soon. So the board met a number of times, and we said, what's the solution? Well, the solution that the board thought would be the smartest for all of our partners was to step up to the break-even point over three years, because then it wouldn't require a referendum. So if you could squeeze in somehow six-point-four-three percent increase for three years, then we're up to break even. We're up to break even. Otherwise, no increases, just like last year, no one gave us an increase last year, another year like that, we're spending the money, we will spend the surplus, and then we'll all be facing a referendum. So, that can happen, we can deal with that, or you can do the other option, and that is kind of step up there. So that's what I'm hoping we can move in that direction for. Next slide. Now, this is a little bit of a overstatement, because I'm saying here that the county board has approved the reimbursement rate at a hundred percent, and I believe it was just the finance committee that's that position so far, and I-
It's in the budget, we'll go to the full county board on the twenty-sixth of October.
Okay, well, thank you, I've got the gospel right here. So, that's good news, because now, when, what that means is that when people outside of our four municipalities, say as in the township of Troy, when they come to use our library, and it costs a dollar ninety-three because of our expenses per item, instead of the county giving us seventy percent of that or eighty-five percent of that, they give us the whole dollar ninety-three. Well, the dollar ninety-three is still way less than what our folks have to pay when we visit River Falls, which you'll see in a minute, it's more like two-sixty-five. So it's a twist of fate that because we're efficient, we get paid less. It's, you just have to get used to it, though. So, this is the good side, thank you, county, thank you, county, for reimbursing us at the full dollar ninety-three. The bad side is down below, which I just alluded to. Next slide. I want to skip over this one. Here is what we have to pay to our neighbors. So when residents from our four municipalities go to other libraries, we've got a bill at Linda's desk, I have a copy of it, River Falls, ask us for a check for twenty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. For our folks that have visited Somerset and Richmond, Roberts and Hammond, they all get those checks, it's forty-seven thousand dollars. From the money that you folks pay us goes out there. We could save every dime of that, every dime of that, if our people stayed home. That's pretty big. Then next year, I wouldn't have to ask for an increase, because I've already got it there. That's pretty smart planning. But that's going out the door. Next slide. And let's go two more, let's go to, to our own city here, village. Because you're so close to our home base, you're not much of a problem. Look at this. You guys, I, I'm not upset at all. You, you folks only cost us, of that forty-seven thousand, only thirty-six hundred. I don't know the numbers on Roberts, but it, it's gonna be pretty small. So, it's so convenient for North Hudson to come to our library as opposed to any of the other ones, it's a little bit different story. So, thank you, North Hudson, for not being a problem here. Next slide. So, we have a request for an incremental increase that is over three years. So, it's not just one-forty-six, dollar forty-six, and you're done. It's each year, I need an additional amount, just like that. So if you increase your budget for us up to the ninety thousand, that's an increase by five-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars, I divide that by your nineteen, excuse me, two-thousand-ten census number, that's a dollar forty-six per person per year. And some people have approached me, and they said, give me a good return on my investment. That's the way they look at this. Give me a good return on my investment. My return on your investment is this, at a dollar forty-six, we can hire another four, full-time person, and we can open our doors at ten AM rather than eleven. We can be open two more hours every Saturday. So, see if that doesn't play well, a dollar forty-six this year, and yes, next year, because without those incremental increases, we do run out of money. And then when we're out there trying to get the funds from the foundations, they're gonna say, well, have you managed your budget? Are your municipalities supporting you at at least the basic level of support, or not? So what I want to talk about next is, in the packages that I provided to each of you, there's a golden one. The golden one is an excerpt from this guy. This is the Wisconsin Public Library Standards publication. Do you have one? It's, Gloria, my wife hand-delivered these to you. Okay, thank you. I see some people not finding this. It's, it's, it's probably stapled to this one right here. Okay, hopefully enough of you have the golden rod piece. What this is, this is appendix B, that, what this does, this compares by service population. So Hudson's in the size between twenty-five thousand and forty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine. We're actually at thirty-one thousand. It's our forty municipalities plus half of Troy, that's thirty-one thousand. What this is saying is that, based upon that service population, the Wisconsin Standards, which is the publication throughout the state that says, here's what we're expecting all of our communities to do support-wise for our libraries. And they break it down into exceptional, you know, and good, and then moderate, and then basic. Basic. So what does basic mean? Basic means that you're in the bottom thirty percent. Okay? That's what I'm aspiring to get our library to, is up to that point at least. That point would be twelve-point-four full-time equivalents. We're right now, as it shows on the blue sheet, so if you would, look at the blue sheet. The blue sheet is this guy. Here's the history lesson on why I have a blue sheet. A year ago, a fellow named John Thompson came into town, and he presented an assessment of our library, and it made the paper. And about a month later, our mayor from Hudson took issue with it, and said there was lots of distortions. Now, our mayor's a friend of mine, and I respect him very much, and so I said, Dean, and I've met with him a couple times one-on-one. And Dean thinks that the best comparables, and these are the ones that were published in the paper, in August sixth, two thousand nine, his own set of comparisons. I have all those comparisons on here, plus the one joint library that's in the Northshore Library, it's just north of Milwaukee, so it's just outside of a major metropolitan area, just like we are here, and they have a number of communities together. They have fifteen full-time equivalents, but what this is saying with our average is twelve. So we're presently at ten. If I could have this budget increase, we get to eleven. It's still less than the average of all the comparisons, and many of these comparisons are much smaller service areas than ours. So, yes, we need one more full-time equivalent to increase the hours. And I would like our library director, this is Linda Donaldson, to just spend two or three minutes talking about the staff needs at our library. Linda?
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, everyone, and I am pleased to talk with, or present my side of the story here tonight, but I'd like to say from the beginning, I love the library's new home, and so does many of the public that come to visit that library. If you have not seen that new home, you need to come in and look at it. If you come to the library and you introduce yourself to me, and I'll be glad to give you a tour of the building. But again, we have a nice new home, and you should come and visit it. Okay. Again, I am Linda Donaldson, for the audience that doesn't, may not have ever seen me around, and I'm asking that the, the board here tonight consider the increase for the public library this year. Why? Because I need additional staff in the building. In the nine-eleven first, Fourth Street Building, it was one level. In the seven-hundred-first Street Building, we have two levels. Yes, we have consolidated a lot of our services or our tasks in the new library. For example, our circulation desk is now a one area, we, we are, we do not, no longer have two circulation desks. The work area is larger, where we can perform our task quickly. We're not having where one individual sits at a computer, and then when the next shift comes, that person has to get up and the next person sits at the computer. Yes, we did add more furnishings to the library, but it was, it has made it work more efficiently at the same time. Okay. Why the need for additional staffing? Like I said, the two floors right now. The other need is, we are simply having more patrons, new patrons come to the library. The other thing is, I've been here since September of two thousand and three, and the circulation continues to grow, yet the staffing has pretty much stayed level. In addition to these three reasons for pursuing an increase in staffing, is the demands, the expectations, and the services our taxpayers want from this new facility. They would like longer hours, they want the children's programs to not just be where an individual just reads a story, they want the children's stories to include puppet theater, music, finger plays. They also want more book clubs, and not just book clubs once a day, they would like to see more book clubs during the day and the evening. Yes, we do use volunteers for some of this, but at the same time, there is more additional supervising and scheduling and guaranteeing these programs do go on. The other thing we're noticing, we have an influx of a lot of individuals coming into the library that don't possess the computer skills that most of us have here today. They are now unemployed, when they were employed, they brought in a decent income, they were able to support their family, they could feel good about themselves, but now they're unemployed, and they do not have computer skills. So, they are coming into the library, and we are assisting these people, we are helping them out in creating resumes, searching for a job, filing unemployment claims. So, the library continues to do what it can for our community. Again, I will ask that you consider the increase in funding that Roy is presenting tonight, and I again extend an invitation to anyone to come and visit the new library. If you see me any place in the building, or you need to see me, ask for me by name, and I'll gladly give you a tour of our new home. That's all.
Thank you, Linda. It is a beautiful facility, another highlight of the grand opening last week was, up in the balcony was standing Jean Erickson, and of course, it was her family that had built that building, and boy, was she touched when the audience there turned around and gave her a little applause, and it's, because it's a magnificent green building, that's gonna be very low on operating costs going forward. I'd like to now turn your attention to the budget request itself, which is in this cover letter, and then there's a budget request for that six-point-four-three percent. On the first page of the budget request, I want to highlight the revenues. So the revenues, as you'll note, we got no increase from two thousand and nine to two thousand and ten. That's why we're gonna lose fifty thousand dollars this year. If we get no increase this year for next year, we'll lose maybe a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars if we hire that full-time equivalent, or we'll probably have to adjust our budget, not hire anybody, and keep the doors locked until eleven o'clock.
Roy, I'm sorry, but I have to interrupt here. You got a three percent raise from the village. You went from eighty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars in two thousand and nine, and in two thousand and ten, it was eighty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
All that is, is a population adjustment. I'm sorry. So, the total is the same for all four municipalities. So if you add the four, that's what we got. Okay? So, and that's, that's shown on the last page, when I do the adjustments, to come up with exactly the allocation of the budget increase.
Okay, my packet does not have any of those attachments in it.
I think we got it.
Never mind. It wasn't in here.
Yeah, I think they're different.
Okay. If you look at the staff compensation, the reason it's going up is that because we've added one full-time- one full-time equivalent into this budget request. The health insurance went up 21 percent. Beyond that, all the increases are beyond our control because we have union employees. The reimbursement to other libraries, you can see where that's up 41 percent. And that's a mixed mark because it's showing that we're going to be paying out $32,000. We redid the math, it's more like $47,000. So this budget is actually $15,000 better than it actually is. Building rent went up 87 percent from $65,000 to $122,000. So without any additional support, if we were without any support at all, we would be another $40,000 behind what this is showing. So it'd be a $135,000 burn this next year. Of course, we probably would decide not to hire the full-time equivalent. So on the actual budget request that we're making to you, if you look at this last page where the population is factored in, the adjustment and the factors, the very bottom grouping shows the 6.43 percent. And that's where you'll see the Village of North Hudson at $90,110.84. That's an increase of $5,380. Up at the top, if all you can do is a 3%, in the Village of North Hudson, we'd be looking for a $2,400 increase, which is about 75 cents ahead per year. So what I find myself in, this position as president of your library is I'm looking at a truck coming my way. And there's different ways to avoid this truck. I'm sorry, what was your comment?
Hours says...
Okay. But what the truck is, is that it's this budget deficit that I'm facing because it's rent and it's costs that are really beyond our control. And we did save for a rainy day. We have $200,000 of surplus. We'll go through $50,000 of that this year. And next year, half of it. And then next year, half of that. And then what do we do? Then we're faced with a referendum or nothing. Because we can't spend money we don't have, obviously. We did save for a rainy day, so we're okay for two years. But we'll run out of that pretty quickly. And then the only way out of this, because you can't adjust for a 19% increase, to break even, we're 19% below. So we divided 19 by 3 and that's where that 6.43 percent comes up. Rob, maybe you want to make a comment or two. Rob's, you know, of course, on the Board of Trustees and he helped the board decide how to tackle this problem. So, Rob?
You know, it seems to me that, I'm not sure that, my analogy is more like you had this great opportunity to, had this great opportunity to take possession of a new home. I mean, it had a great discount. I mean, this building was acquired with great common sense. You know, it's a $6.5 million building when it was built in 97. Yeah. And the city bought it for $2.5 million. I mean, that's a great deal to begin with. Now, we got great value then after that by selling the small building up by the corner for a couple hundred grand. And all in all, you know, it's, this is the deal that you could never walk away from. So as an investor, you'd say, you know, you gotta do it. You know, for one thing, it's elevated that library. You know, people in and out of the grand opening were just in awe of how that building appeared and what it meant to the community. It really means a significant thing. It's, it has all of those capabilities that a strong community should display in their library. So in that regard, I really feel that, you know, as owners, we really, you know, you are owner. The City of Hudson is owner. The Town of Hudson is owner. As owners, the right thing to do is afford it. You know, it's worth it. So, you know, I think it's, you know, it may not seem like a lot of money in one regard, a buck and a half a person. And I know it's a percentage of a budget you have to manage. But I'd like to see you try. So, thanks.
Thanks, Rob. I'll entertain any questions.
I have one. When you, when we order a book and it comes from, say, River Falls, that's not at our library, we get charged? You get charged for that? Or the library gets charged for that?
Just a transaction fee. It's not the full $2.65 going to River Falls. You have to actually go in there for those charges to hit. You can order books, of course, from your own computer and then they'll be delivered here. And then all of those, we do charge, pay a fee to IFLS out of Eau Claire. And in the budget, it's about $22,000 if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, $22,145 for all those internet orders that they process.
I received two emails. I was asked to read these and I will do so. Roger and Laura Davis wrote the following. "As residents of North Hudson, we fully support the additional funding request by our library. The new facility is a wonderful resource for all and the little more than a dollar a year needed for such a great new facility shows great fiscal care and the way we like to see our tax dollars spent. Please read this end of the record as our show of support for funding the library." Received this note from Chuck and Kathy Roberts. "The cost of the library proposal is less than a cup of coffee. We strongly support longer library hours. The current 11 o'clock is in the middle of the day for us older people. Hope you will support the increase." Thank you.
I couldn't say that myself.
Just an item about costs. In 2008, the village contributed $75,811 to the cause, to the library. And in 2011, based on a 3% increase, it would be $87,272. That's $11,461 increase since 2008. That represents a 15% increase. Just so we keep the record straight as far as what the village's contributions have been to the library. While we're talking about annual contributions, the fire department gets $90,269 and EMS anticipated will be $46,150. I mention these numbers only so that everyone is aware and I'll share this with the public as I have with you on several previous meetings. We are limited to tax levy increase by the governor this year of 3%. It's been 2.07% and 3.0% over the past several years. With that in mind, we have to recognize these increases in these budgets. The village, as all of you who live here know and anybody who's passing through knows, we don't have industry here. This is basically a bedroom community. When we have these 3% levy limits, we need to find the money from somewhere. The difference, and I've done the arithmetic, it's not math, folks, it's arithmetic. From 3 to 6.43% comes out to $2,904 if my arithmetic is correct. When we look at that, that's a little piece. And then there's another little piece and another little piece. But cumulatively, it can't be more than 3%. And so I've been told by a couple of people on the library board, well, just take it out of somewhere else. Well, if I take it out of somewhere else, then I have to take that from somewhere else and I have to take it from somewhere else. I'm just going to wrap up my comment with this. You'll notice as you look at the agenda that no action is scheduled to take place on this tonight. The budget, the finance committee will be meeting and will be proposing a budget. That budget may include 6.43 for the library. It may be 3.5, it may be 3. I can't predict that at this time. I just want you to know, I'm not questioning the value of the library. That is not the issue. We recognize that. But I would also remind you of a comment that Steve Wilcox made at that meeting that we had last summer when he said, "You can't keep going back to the taxpayer. You need to be looking at the philanthropy out there, the benefactors." For those people who say that it's only a cup of coffee over the course of a year, I'll fully, I recognize that. Maybe, and I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, it's like passing the hat to the people who have such strong feelings and emotions towards a library, raise funds through philanthropy, raise money. Or I have trouble going back to my neighbors, to my constituents and saying, "Sorry, folks, it could cost a little bit more this year and a little bit more." What are you using it for? The library. Hey, timeout. I'm just sharing with you what some of the other thoughts are, the people who have called me and the other side of the two emails that I just read to you. So, Joe?
I got a couple of questions. The 6.43% increase would allow us to have longer operating hours on Saturdays or Sundays? Is that the idea? Or do you have any idea what that would be?
I'm thinking seven hours. Seven hours. One additional hour every day of the week. Instead of opening at 11, open up at 10 and then two more hours on Saturday.
If we, if we did that, or if you were able to do that, would that put a dent in the $47,000 that we contribute to other...
I think it would have to.
And are you factoring that into the revenue side?
For next year, no. Next year has closed already. What we pay out was based upon what happened in 2009.
Okay.
All right? So when I'm here next year, it'll be based upon what happened during this year.
And so you're anticipating...
And then 2011 will be a good year because then we'll be, if we had the hours, right now, we don't have the hours.
I understand.
Yeah. And we really want to go there. We want to give this the opportunity to see if we can bring all those people home. But we have to be open, of course.
Okay. So...
Yes.
The other, in my observation, and I've been on the board eight years now, I kind of remember talking about budgets with the library. Not kind of, I remember talking about budgets with the library. And it seems like the history of the library budget has increased more than any other particular line item that we've had on a percentage basis for the time that I've been on the board. It seems like we were, we were getting, we were getting 5, 6, 7, 8% increases a year. Does anybody on the board remember that? Or George, or...
The formula that the library uses is based on per capita.
Yes, I understand.
Same with EMS.
Yeah.
And the fire department uses, as you know, property value.
Do you remember any percentage increase?
But that had changed also. So the formula changed. And in fact, in one year, you may recall when Larry said, "We've got to correct and bring ourselves up." So that actually caused a larger bump.
I just wanted to think about that. The last, say, 10 years is that we have been funding the library to a ever-increasing rate.
Well, everything is relative, of course. You know, where we are right now is still one-third less than what River Falls, our sister city.
Yeah. I understand. And our problem, our problem is to kind of reiterate what George is saying is we are, we're not growing. North Hudson is not growing. We're not building a lot of new buildings. There aren't a lot of new houses going in the last couple of years. And so our revenue base is pretty flat. And so that's the problem we have. And we understand the problem you have. So my question then is, what happens?
Maybe your answer is to not divide by population but to divide by your tax base. You know, I came on board here in June and this is what it is.
But here's my, my final question is this. If we increase 6.43%, is that, is that next year and the year after?
It's all three years because we're 19% below breakeven.
Okay. So then the question would be, what would happen in the fourth year? What's your projections, what would happen in the fourth year? Is this going, is this going to end? Is this going to end? That's my question.
Well, it has to get to a certain point where it's at least basic level. If I don't get us to a basic level, then get another president. Okay? So if we get up to the basic level and now we approach the foundations and we say, "Listen, our municipalities are covering our expenses. Would you please help us buy the building?" Sure. All right? Then when they come in and buy the building, now we're covering our expenses and maybe the expenses even go down a little bit. Maybe they even go down a little bit. And then our private fundraising can help enhance our programs. All right? It's written in the Trustees Essentials Manual that municipalities should never request private funds to support their basic budget. But we're doing that. We're doing that. It's, my conviction is municipalities should support their libraries at at least the basic level. That's the law of Wisconsin. And we're not doing that. Stan? Stan, you had something?
Yeah, well, there's a lot of stuff I got. I mean, there's statute, I mean, that's the law of Wisconsin. I, you know, I'm just, you know, concerned. I said, "I don't know if anybody in here, anybody want to raise their hand that got a 6.43% increase in their wages?" I don't see any hands. How about 3%? I don't see any hands. I mean, you know, I mean...
What are you going to ask them to publicly say if they had a greater percentage than that? Is that what you're asking them to do?
No, I'm just asking if they even got in the ballpark for that.
Okay, mine was up.
Well, then you're doing, then, all right, you're the library board. There you go, there's 6.43%.
And my salary was down 40% the year before. So what's your point?
You know, and you used a slide earlier today that said your membership or people were in 100, you know, 100% increase, all right? So if you got one person on the deal and you get another person on the deal, that's 100% increase. You know, so you got two. I didn't see any numbers that say how many people you actually came in there with. You also said that Carnegie was the only, you know, was the first move of this library. The library used to be at Locust and Third Street in Hudson. It moved up to the old courthouse up on Fourth Street and now you're back down to this library. So, you know, there's a quote that I don't remember who said it, but you got, you know, lies, damn lies and statistics. And the numbers that I'm seeing here are, you know, we can chew them up. I mean, you can, you can make these numbers say anything you want, which is your job, which is you're doing a very good job of. I have to, you know, admit to that. But, you know, I mean, one of the things in the paper you said, "The unexpected expenses, you know, mostly related to a move, new facility include rent in an old facility." For God's sakes, I mean, if you're going to move and you didn't see a rent increase or a staff needing increase?
That's old news.
Well, it's old news, but it's very pertinent to what we're talking about here for the people that don't, you know, haven't watched, you know, your, you know, library presentations.
Well, we're in it right now. I mean, we're in the building. And for your point to be valid, we shouldn't have gone into the building. But we're in it.
I agree with that. In fact, the village voted against that two years ago.
No, that was a different program.
Can't we have our board member be a little civil?
Well, I'm trying to be civil.
I'm okay.
I don't think so when you're calling damn lies. I think we can have this conversation.
That was a quote that...
Yes, but I'm saying you could be a little bit more civil to our guests as a board member. You can say your same points without being that way.
Well, I've been getting these numbers. I mean, I've been doing the research and looking at the numbers and stuff like that. And I just don't believe they're accurate.
There's ways to say that without attacking our guests. You represent us.
That's what I'm trying to do. I've had 12 to 1 calls against this increase. That is what I'm trying to convey. All right? 12 to 1.
Jim?
Thank you. I'll be brief. And the library is fantastic. There's no doubt about it. I was at the grand opening. I do have my concerns as I take my time away from work to try to hammer out finances with this board as a member of the finance committee. Maybe I'm optimistic here. And I've been accused of that more than once. Maybe I'm optimistic here, and I've been accused of that more than once, but I think that as I look at the expenditures on this 2011 approved joint budget, and I look at the reimbursement to other libraries in the $20,000 range and projected up to $32,000, maybe I'm not looking at this right, but after visiting the library on Saturday, it'd be my hopes that other municipalities would find cause to come and use this library and reverse this. And I did, I do have to touch on what Joe said, is I don't see anything in the revenue side of this showing anything paid to the Hudson Library from other libraries using our facility. Again, optimistically, it would be wonderful to see that transition occur just the way it is. I realize as that happens, at the same time, it will incur a bigger workload, which gets us back to our original problem. I'm not denying that. But with that being said, is that something that is possibly a little bit overlooked in these figures? Or am I looking at that wrong?
If the years that we take into consideration were different, it would be overlooked. But the year that produces the revenue for us for next year is closed. It closed on 12/31/2009, all right? And the number that we're getting from those other libraries comes to us from the county. It's exactly $65,763. So, we know that. We're not overlooking anything. So, this year, 2010, when I'm back here next year, hopefully that number will be different. We have a half a year in this new facility where our cards are up and people will have come here, and hopefully the people from Troy have come here, and the people from other libraries have come here. Then we'll increase the revenue here. I know that our county writes a check to River Falls for over $125,000.
Thank you.
It's a bizarre thing, but thank you for asking those questions. I appreciate it.
And one last thing I have to say, in looking at the little bar graphs earlier, we need to get the word out to our North Hudson residents to use this library. We're paying for it. We might as well take advantage of it. So, again, as George said earlier, we'll be talking about this at Finance Committee level, but...
And just to respond to Stan, on the bar graphs that were shown, there are numbers on the side, so you can interpret what the numbers are.
Yeah, I saw the numbers.
Oh, you said there weren't numbers, but...
Well, there's numbers there.
Anybody else? Somebody from the left side of the table here.
I'm good.
Colleen?
Well, I really like the library, too. I didn't make it to the open house since I was at the passive House in the Woods open house instead, but I have used it, and I feel that I would like us to be able to support this increase, because I've noticed just what a nicer facility it is. And I can see where, like you mentioned, the mothers wanting to come with their kids. I used it a lot when my kids were little, and it'd be nice if it was open earlier since kids are up earlier. And also on Saturdays, I've tried going on Saturday afternoon and found it closed, and then had to wait till Monday. So, I think I would hope that we would be able to make this increase work.
Rob would like to...
One observation that I made, and it became really quite apparent over the weekend, was that this library has a very committed teen action group. And this young, these young people really have bonded together. They do a lot at the library, and it really has become, for them, I think, a very much a community youth resource. And for example, in the short video, there were tattoos going on. So, all these youth volunteers are doing these things with the younger people, with the younger kids in the library. And I think this, if there's one thing that I didn't really understand much about the library before I got on the board in July, it was the involvement of the youth. And I find that to be very admiring, admirable, so something to keep in mind.
Mark, anything?
No, thanks. I appreciate it. Nice presentation. I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Be right with you, Mary Beth. The next item on the agenda will be for us to discuss the impact fees. And the $34,406.33 that happens to be in our account in the impact fees, two of the municipalities have impact fee collections, two do not. This opens up a Pandora's Box, as you well know. What do we do with that $34,000 and change to make it fair and equitable? And we know that you have until 2012 to spend some of it, otherwise it reverts back to the property, the current property owner of the property where it was collected. In many cases, what we've discovered is the original payee no longer lives there. But that's all right, because it goes to the current owner. So, we're going to have a discussion about how we work with that, but we feel that the library board should also be involved with this, so it's fair and equitable to the two municipalities that did not contribute to it. I hope you understand the situation for us as a board is not an easy one. It'd be very easy for us to accommodate Colleen, her family, and the people who want those extra hours, and yeah. And on the other hand, we've got the other residents who say, "No, you're already getting, what is it, 22, 22 and a half per person, per resident now?" About half that.
The state average is 37.
I don't care about the state average.
It doesn't matter, unless you're wanting to be relative.
Yeah.
Mary Beth?
Well, I was just going to say...
Would you please use a microphone?
First, I want to thank you all for your service, because I've been on the Plan Commission, and it's good service you do, and I appreciate it, all of you. And I know you have to watch the numbers. I'm one of those people of many in North Hudson and the whole community who definitely had a drastic cut in our income. You know, people who are from Anderson, we all know, there's a lot of people who have had drastic cuts. And so, I know your job is difficult. Fire versus EMS versus library and everything else. So, I have compassion for your decision. I wish I wasn't, I mean, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes to try and figure out budgets, because I'm not really that good at that. But I would like to say that for that very reason, that we have had impacts in our community financial. We have more people needing the library to find jobs, to find information, to retrain themselves, to get access to information. The whole reason, you know, Franklin and Carnegie and everybody else started the library system was for that reason. I urge the library to consider varying hours so that people, you know, maybe not starting every day at the same time, you know, maybe there's some things that can be done on the library side to make more access. But the bottom line is, the more transactions, the more people who need the library, the more staff can't keep up to get that information that gets taken from all our wonderful library system to the patrons. And as an author, and certainly not a bestselling one by any means, access to information, I can get research from all over from the library, but it has to get processed. It comes through us. We have a treasure, and as a grant writer, I can't write grants for the library until we're solid, I mean, until we have the bottom line. We couldn't survive in the old building in that way. Some people look at the library as a luxury. It isn't a luxury. It is what our democracy was built on, is that access to information. This is not a rich community. It's a middle-class community that needs to keep access for everybody. So, that's... And one other thing, I teach at the university, and it's harder and harder to keep students all the way engaged in books. And they do studies, and they found that those children, those young people who have books, who love books, who are with books, they are the ones who are successful in society and don't end up being another problem as much in the police side of our expenses, or they don't end up being another expense in someplace else. And when somewhere they get lost in the chain of loving books, that's part of it. And we can't afford to buy hardcover books. We can't afford to buy those books. I can't. I have to go to the library. And when you start kids at 11 o'clock in the afternoon, then it comes the lunchtime, and as a mom, then they have naptime. You miss that time in the morning with books, and then you miss it later on, because you can't instill it when they're 6 and 7, 8 as easily as you can if they start all the way. So, that's my plea for books, for writing, for an engaged, it's often, you know, those people who are more engaged in democracy and keeping our communities, quality communities. So...
Thank you, Mary Beth. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Scott Snyder, 1209 Riverside Drive North. A resident of North Hudson for 22 years, and prior to that in Hudson for 25 years. Product of the Hudson School System, went to EP Rock, Junior High, Hudson High School, class of '76. Two terms on this distinguished village board, 16 years on Plan Commission. Sat in your shoes, trying to make those tough choices and make that balance. I encourage you all, I'm here first for the record, to support the public library for the modest increase. I know those are tough choices to make when it comes time to set in the budget. Sat in the basement with Mark on four different budgets and found a way to do it every year. No easy task. I encourage you all to go home tonight. A couple nights ago, I typed in "the value of public libraries." The internet, as you all know, is fabulous. And I started reading. Pick whatever you want to read, but just do the same, I encourage you. The value of public libraries. There were two particular studies that I looked at, just randomly, what looks interesting. One was the state of Florida, another one was in Great Britain. What are the tangible benefits and what are the intangible benefits? As a board member, what are the tangible, what do we get out of this? Of supporting, fully supporting a public library, as our board members and library members have said, to get it up to a modest level, a basic level. I don't have all those statistics, Stan, but there's enough statistics on the internet. Trust me, you can fill this room with them if you want to read it. The interesting thing is, I did my little research, 90 minutes maybe, at the most, of reading. I could not find one, single one, search, click, search, click, that said there wasn't a tangible benefit. Some listed job creation, some listed economic development, some listed a more educated workforce. I don't think there's anyone sitting on that side of the table that say that good public library, we're not here to say we don't support that. It's a means to try to find the balance to support this modest increase. Encourage you all, go home, do that. Value of public libraries. You'll be fascinated what you'll read. I hope in your budget, that you can find a way, in your budget session, to find a modest increase of $1.46, yes, whatever the percentage works out. I think the tangible benefits are very direct and measurable. I don't have the PowerPoint to show you that. That's why I encourage you to go read it. The intangible benefits, as a resident of this community in Hudson since 1962, a product of this school district, it's a tremendous source of civic pride, even more so today. And I think it's a real reflection of us as a community, society, of what we do value. And the public library is an institution that goes long back throughout our rich history as a community and as a country, and I hope you find a way to support it fully at the request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roger. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Kurt?
My name is Kurt Wees. I live at 613 Cedar Drive North. I apologize for getting here late. We had a swim meet tonight. I'm the announcer, but I'm glad I got here right at the end of the presentation. You know, people come before the board pleading for money. I call it picking the pocket of their neighbors. I mean, we all believe in a good library. We wedged our way into a new facility or a newer facility, knowing full well, the library board knew full well, the past president and the current president both knew that we were being out of money in three to four years in that facility. Without coming for a huge tax increase from the taxpayers, without coming for a referendum, they're going to be out of money. In four years, they won't be able to afford that facility. My question is, when we had that referendum, a year ago, I believe it was, somewhere in there, we were told that there was going to be $5 million raised privately for the library. Five million! My question to the people who've come up here and spoke, and I don't have quite the resume as some that have come up here, I've lived there for 17 years, my question is, open the pocketbook up and write a check. That's very easy to do. Why come and ask me for the money? Open your pocket. That's the great thing about a democracy. All these big believers in the library and the new facility and all that, their pocketbooks have suddenly closed. Those people that were going to raise $5 million have vanished from our community. I haven't heard that. Those people are gone. When we hear from Mr. Schoberg, at least, I didn't hear his presentation, but I don't need to hear Roy talk. I know what he said. If we just ask, get a little bit more taxpayer money, those people are going to come out of the woodwork. In four years, they're going to start giving us money. That, those private foundations just got to see a little more give from the taxpayers, and then they're going to show up. I swear to God, they're going to come. They're coming. But you've got to give a little bit more, Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer, and then they'll come. No, I say, bring on the $5 million. You know, they had a facility, they had the money to buy books. They had $500,000 in the bank, they had money to buy books, they had money to expand, they had money to re-carpet, they had money to fix up that facility. But no, people in the Library Foundation decided that they want a new building, they want a newer building, so they bound their way into that building. Backdoor deal made with the mayor. The mayor said, "No tax increase." But boy, here it comes. Here comes the tax increase. It's just a little bit more. It's just the cost, it's just the cable bill. It's just $1.46. It's just a little bit more of this or that. But the same people that say it's a little bit more of this or that, their pockets are closed. Open them up and write a check.
My pockets closed.
That's what I, I didn't talk when you were talking. Did I talk when you were talking?
No, you didn't, sir.
Well, then I'd be quiet. I didn't talk when you were talking. I didn't talk when you were talking. You had your time at the microphone.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, then I'd be quiet, because I got my time at the microphone. People can come up here and they can ask for money, but their pockets are closed. I want the $5 million raised by the private foundation and then come and ask me for some money. We'll see where we're at then. I think they'll have enough.
Thank you, Kurt. Sorry, sir, you've had your chance.
Please don't leave. Please don't leave. I've heard of them.
My name is Susan Kattas. I live at 207th Street North, and I've lived in Hudson for going on 27 years. I'm in support of the library, and I would like to volunteer right now to buy 20 cups of coffee when you do the assessments. So, our household would be happy to do that, to make up some differences. I thank Roy for his presentation and, you know, being on the hot seat tonight, too, going around to the different communities, because I know that's what he's been doing. One of the things that I'm always reminded of when we get into situations like this is that, you know, the library, while I might not want to spend a cup of coffee to support it, because maybe I don't use it, I actually do use it, but if I were one of those people that didn't use it, I have to think about the greater good for the community. For example, I don't have any kids, but I'm delighted that my tax money goes towards the schools. I'm a senior, but I'm still delighted that on my, you know, retirement budget, that I can still support the schools. So, because I'm interested in something beyond just my personal needs. And I guess that's basically it. I dropped my flashlight. I brought that along, because I walked down here, so thank you very much, and I encourage the board to consider the positive sides of supporting the library.
Thank you.
My name is Holly Grubb, and I live at 1535 Riverside, North Hudson. And what I have to say really shouldn't be said to you people, because what, the facts have been presented to you very ably by several people, and emotions have been expressed very ably by several people. The only reason I stand up here is that there were some remarks by Mr. Wees that just cast a negative tone, and the argument was totally unfounded. He talked about the $5 million that has all of a sudden disappeared. Had Mr. Wees studied the situation, he would have known that the $5 million was for the purchase of the building that we already have. The $5 million which was being raised by charity was for the purchase of a building, not for the operation of the library. I address you as a former president of the foundation. There's an organization called the Library... There's a, there's an organization called the Library Foundation, which its goal is to support the library's capital needs. In other words, the, the new building. And this organization is still in existence, is now headed by Jeff Zeiss, and stands ready to go to work to raise $5 million if necessary, whatever it takes, to continue with plans for a library, or do we want to call it a new civic center, as some of us are starting to think about this, of being more than just a library. And, and so, I want what Mr. Wees to be corrected. It hasn't disappeared. And I want to tell you that it is planned for more to be spent and raised by benevolency. That building is, is, needs more work. At the current situation, the building is capable of housing a, a, an inventory which is inadequate for our population. But we can't really increase that inventory because of the strength of the floor. In that $5 million, we were planning to strengthen that floor. And, and as time goes on, there will still be a capital campaign, whether it's $5 million, $1 million, $2 million, $3 million, we don't know. There's a study going on right now to determine what the future of this whole facility should be. Thank you for all of your consideration.
Thank you, Holly.
We know where you live. Right around the corner, behind the street.
All right. Roy, any closing thoughts?
No, I'd just like to thank the sponsors, or the supporters, for speaking with more passion and more eloquence than I could come up with. And it takes a young mom and a senior citizen to deliver and a person of your standing in the community, Hollis. And it's frustrating to hear people like Kurt Wees. But we, we fight on and we do our best and I commend you for hearing me out and for asking your good questions. So, it's a tough job, I just hope you give it a good, fair shot.
Just a question, Al. You have come before four municipalities seeking 6.43. You've already been turned down by one, as I understand it, from the newspaper, and approved by, and it's been approved by one. But as I understand the contract, all four municipalities have to approve. So, suppose the village said, and I'm making this up, suppose the village said, "Well, we can't go to 6.43, but we could do four." Would we now have to convince the other three municipalities to do likewise?
I came here tonight wanting to wear my baseball helmet and my, bring my bat, because it's the bottom of the ninth, I'm the Twins. For me to win, I have to hit four home runs.
But you've already got that out.
I had one homerun and now even that's being reviewed. Because the city of Hudson, when they did not approve the budget request, that cast a pale over everything else.
Right.
I mean, that was the most disappointing evening I've ever had, to have the old, my own city that owns the building, that has the greatest flexibility in its budget, not be able to address it. But, I was probably pushing too hard that night and I learned my lesson. So, what they really wanted to do is consider my budget request along with the rest of their package. I wanted them to approve it upfront so that I could use that approval with the town of Hudson and with your village, because then you would be the fourth one. And if I hit three home runs already, I'd be looking pretty good to hit a fourth. Okay? But that was denied and so the city of Hudson is going to reconsider their vote, is going to reconsider it. And when they do, they'll be looking at the whole budget. So, maybe they'll approve that 3% or 4%. Maybe behind my back, all the municipalities talk to each other anyway and they decide what's going to happen. I don't know. There seems to be some communication link going on somewhere, because it happens. So, I, I, I hope that, if you can approve the 6.4, point three, 6.43%, that you can accommodate some increase. I can also address the, you know, the, the impact fee too a little bit, once you move on to that.
Thank you, I think.
Oh, thanks to everybody. I thought it was a, it was a good discussion this evening.
Okay, then.
When does it go back to the city of Hudson, maybe if you're here?
I'm not sure, the next Finance Committee or regular city meeting?
Because we're going to be doing budget sometime and this is the request.
When's the final, it goes back to Finance and then we're, we come forward and work again.
Which is the way we, we will be doing it.
So, really, we're still in the middle of it, anyway.
Yeah.
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 All I can say is it's complicated.
But we, as a Finance Committee, and as we develop the budget and then go before the board, it almost sounds like it's 6.43 or nothing. When I say nothing, I don't mean zero dollars. It's, you don't have an alternative for us. You haven't presented us with, "If you can't go to 6.43, we can't accept anything." Or, "6.43 or at least give me a 3%." That's what I'm asking, I, because...
On, on the last page of our budget request, it says, "Here's what the 6.43% would mean in dollars, here's what a 3% would be, here's what a 5%..."
I understand that.
"...here's an 8." And so, yeah, if you're going to deny the 6.43, I would very much appreciate a 3 or a 2. Sure.
What I'm suggesting, though, and I think the rest of the board sees this as well, is that there are three other municipalities who would have to agree with whatever number, with a number.
I agree, so, okay. Maybe George, you can help me figure this out next year.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it, is there, from your board, I mean, is there any, or I, I guess I, let me restate.
Start over.
I'll start over. I used to think there was like a board member who was like a designated library, a communication person.
He's sitting right there.
Right, but who went and could...
Oh, he's not a board member, though. Right, he was appointed by the board.
No, but I was thinking, who was on the board, who could talk, like, whatever you call it, on equal level, to these other budgetary functions, so you guys could sit down and talk. Wouldn't that make the most sense, is a budget person from each of the four communities to talk instead of these different, all these different meetings, like you all came together once or something?
Well, actually, we do meet periodically. It's the intergovernmental, it's the intergovernmental Advisory Committee.
Right.
But we also have to be very careful because of violation of open meeting laws. We have to make sure that if we were going to talk about any of these topic, topics, they have to be on the agenda. The agenda has to be polished. And the other thing is, the next IAC meeting isn't until October 25th.
25th.
And we need to have these budget meetings, we've already scheduled them, as you heard, oh, that's, remember, I'm just looking at the dates, 20th and 27th.
George, aren't there members of each municipality on the library board? Aren't you a...
Yeah.
And, and do you not discuss the budget at those meetings?
Well, this sounds like it could be a topic for that discussion, or for that topic of discussion.
I'm just trying to answer her question, the fact that that, those conversations.
It seems like it's to everybody's benefit, every community's benefit, not to let that drainage happen. So, if the four communities could work together to say, "How do we stop the muddy drain from going in?" Then you could figure out the number instead of him keep trying to tell you guys.
Let's put it on the agenda for that IAC meeting.
The agenda actually was sent out to all the municipalities today. You should have gotten it in an email.
Okay. Wait a minute, it was sent to the municipalities?
Do you amend them?
We can address it with the Chair of the Intergovernmental Advisory Council and see if they want to amend the agenda, but it's not our agenda to amend.
Oh, okay, I understand. All right.
But was there not some discussion at the library board from the municipalities regarding, maybe some...
You go to the library board meetings, correct?
I have been to a couple, but not as regularly.
Who's our representative?
Rob.
Rob is, okay.
But it seems like it's, it's, it's different municipalities. I mean, the other thing is, then you guys could put a lot more pressure on Hudson to be a little bit more flexible. I mean, that, we don't, I mean, you're asking for, the group is trying to coordinate this.
That's interesting.
George, let's take control of the meeting.
Absolutely.
We'll put it on, we'll see if we can get it on the agenda for the IAC for the 25th.
It's not our job to lobby for, against the other communities for this.
No, I'm not trying to lobby against, I'm just saying...
Yes, you are.
I'm just trying to say, you all have an invested interest as taxpayers to figure out, and I apologize for interrupting.
Thank you, Roy. I think we're going to table a discussion of the library impact fees. We'll get back to that in the near future.
Thanks again for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to enter, I'm going to entertain a motion that we table items 11C, request the use of library impact fees. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mark, Mark seconded.
I just can't hear who's moving in second.
I tabled item 11C.
Okay, and you made that motion?
I made the motion and Mark seconded.
Yes, seconded.
I don't think we need a roll call vote on this, so I'll just ask for a voice vote, all in favor of item C, tabling item 11C, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 2011 budget update. Lori, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Um, just very quickly, um...
I did say a little bit about that.
Yeah, yeah, very quickly. The budget packet should have been under your book or somewhere in your area where you were seated. It, it wouldn't have been in your book that was delivered to you, it should be on the table.
Big, thick thing.
Please take it home and review it, get ready for the upcoming budget process.
Enough said about that. Next item is the bank loan bid selection for capital equipment. The Finance Committee did look this over. You'll see that we had a response from six lending institutions and there is a suggested motion there. I would ask someone to make that motion and we could talk about it a little bit more.
I move to accept the loan bid from Associated Bank in the amount of $100,000 at a 3.15% fixed rate and a $300 processing fee over a five-year repayment schedule with semi-annual payments beginning in March of 2011 and with no prepayment penalties. Further move to authorize the village president and the village administrator to sign the appropriate loan agreements and to secure the funds.
Thank you, Darrell. Second by... Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? Lori, did you want to, you mentioned something to the, or talked about this at the Finance. I think the rest of the board might be interested in this as well.
I think the only question was, were we going to finance the $300 or pay that?
No, just pay it.
Yeah, I, I just included what the rate would be if the $300 was included in the, was financed versus, excuse me, versus paid upfront. It just shows your true interest cost instead of what the initial one is.
The motion, as I read, the motion didn't indicate that we would pay that $300 processing fee or include it in the loan. So, what's your recommendation?
Should be just paid.
Should be just paid? All right, very good. Any, any questions or comments?
Can you amend the motion to say paying it upfront?
I can, if you want the minutes to read that way.
Right, thank you.
And the, Jim, you'll...
I'll approve the second of the friendly amendment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is an excellent loan rate. I wish I could borrow money at that rate. All in favor, oh, we, roll call, we're spending money. Loan. Start with you, Mark?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We've got a couple resolutions here. Make some check marks here. Item F, Resolution 2010-9, authorization to borrow money for the 10th Street repair. Let's get a motion on the table and then we'll discuss it if we need to. I'm going to read that resolution. I guess because it's long. All right, I'll make the motion.
You don't need to read that.
Don't have to read it?
I think we need to read the whole resolution.
As stated.
Mr. President, I'll move approval of Resolution Number 2010-09, which in summary form authorizes the borrowing of some specific of $125,636 and that is for the purpose of funding the 10th Street project, which is now completed and finished.
I'll second.
I guess that's redundant, isn't it? It's completed, period.
I got it. Okay. Any questions on this one? Roll call, well, we'll start with Stan this time.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Lori.
Loan repayment policy.
It's, we're not ready.
We're not ready with it?
We need to address that with the budget.
Very good. Okay. I'll move that we table item 11G.
Second.
Is that you, Darrell?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor of tabling that motion, indicate by saying aye.
It's 9:30, George, they're going to come fast.
11H. What we're looking for here is authorization for a village, for authorization of village officials to negotiate the WPPA Union Contract. I'll move that, to authorize the village president, that'd be me, Public Safety Chair would be Joe Quatherne, Village Administrator Gloria Trester, and Police Chief Mark Richard, to negotiate a successor contract with the North Hudson Professional Police Association on behalf of the village of North Hudson.
Second.
Thank you, Stan. As far as any discussion, just in case anyone is concerned, the contract is, we can negotiate all until we come to an agreement, but it still comes before the board for approval. It's simply asking for us to negotiate on your behalf. Any questions? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public Works. Mr. Darrell, you want to talk a little bit about Public Works here?
No, I actually don't, since I was out of state at the last Public Works meeting and it was ably chaired by my colleague down there, as you appropriately say, on the left side of the, of the bench. I prefer being on the right side, so, Mr. Zappa... It's got to be the longest introduction I've had in some time, anyway. Mr. Zappa can do this. If, if, if we may take care of a couple, um, um, basic items, C and D, then we can let Patrick from Cedar Corp. talk about our larger topic, the Storm Water Utility Fund. C is the 6th Street North Sanitary Sewer Repairs. I believe this had been before the board once before and the project got postponed because the Public Works thought there might be a different approach to it. It discovered there wasn't any, so this is, this is a project that's been board, before the board before, but we still need approval for it. In your packets, there's the topic and background and a suggested motion. If anybody has any additional questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, but it's been here before.
Would you like someone other than yourself to read that?
Okay, I'll move to recommend to the Board of the Public Works Department and the Village Engineering, move to recommend to the Board that the Public Works Department and Village Engineering determine the best course of action to alleviate problems with the sewer line or install a parallel line and accept the bid proposal from Zappa Brothers Escavating for $3,084.
Second.
I started to ask you if you would like somebody else to read that motion, considering it's...
I understand. I, I've, I'll tell you what, I'll, in the interest of time and since I voted on the I, I've, I'll tell you what, I'll, in the interest of time, and since I voted on these things before, and they've, this, these projects have been bid, I'll stick my neck out and make the motion.
Okay.
Even though, what George is referring to is Zappa Brothers is obviously my brother's company, so, but...
Will you abstain from the vote?
I'll gladly do whatever you like.
To speed this along.
I, I know what you're saying, but I, I had to make the motion to get it going at the Public Works, so...
That's fine.
To do, to not follow through with it as a duplexes.
Okay, okay. Do I hear a second?
I did.
Yes.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, start with you, Mr. Wickens.
Yes.
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 Epstein.
Thank you.
And our second project is, um, repair of three sanitary sewer manholes on Monroe Street North. In the minutes, it says, Zappa commented that, uh, uh, these manholes needed repairs. I, that's a mistake, I'm not in charge of determining what needs repairs. I should've said Mark Ekblad, but nonetheless, um, I'll again make the motion, move to accept the Monroe Street North bid for Zappa Brothers to raise two sanitary sewer manholes with new castings and install blacktop around the castings to protect them during snowplowing, and to have a third manhole casting replaced, all at a cost not to exceed 3,897 dollars.
I'll second. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Uh, we'll start this time with Colleen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 And Mark, you had something to say?
Epstein.
There you go.
All right. And, not to make light of the expenditures, but there, these are routine fixed jobs.
Yep. I, I had a question of you regarding, uh, something in the minutes, Mark, is very easy one.
Sure.
Uh, under Storm Sewer Utility Fund, the curbside leaf collection was eliminated from the maintenance budget.
I can answer that.
Glory can answer.
Um, I met with Cedar Corp. and realized that when they were given the numbers for, um, cost, existing, existing cost, those were included in, and we received reimbursement from the county, so we would be actually double dipping on that, so that cannot be included in, in with those, that, that calculation.
Back to you.
All right, our, um, at this point, we're bringing the Storm Wa, Storm Sewer Utility Fund idea to the board, and I'll let Patrick Belfus of, with Cedar Corp., explain where we're at with it right now, and what we would like to proceed to do with board approval.
Thanks, Mark. Um, I'm gonna, uh, explain two things. One is the, the number of equivalent runoff units, or ERUs, that we came up with for the village, and then how that relates to the, uh, budgets for annual maintenance and some stormwater projects, and how that equates into a quarterly ERU costs of $6. Okay? With our calculations, we came up with a total of 1,884 ERUs within the village. This was determined by, uh, assigning one to a single-family home. Duplexes, triplexes, threeplexes got, received .6 ERUs per dwelling unit. Fiveplexes and above, the amount of impervious surface was divided by 3,500 square feet, which is our base unit for ERU, and that gave us a number of, uh, uh, ERUs. And then anything else, industrial, commercial, institutional, uh, was determined the same way. The amount of impervious surface was divided by 3,500 square feet. So adding those ERUs together, we have 1,884. So then we started looking, looking at things that can be funded through the stormwater utility, and we looked at annual, uh, stormwater maintenance within the village. And, uh, Mark provided us with, uh, the budgets over the last two years, uh, for 2008, 2009, and said 2010 was gonna be roughly the same. And so we looked at the costs, and it was determined that generally, these numbers are gonna be about the same over time, over the next five years. So what we did was, we added a 4% increase over the 2008, 2009 average to compensate for some inflation and some growth of the utility system, or the stormwater system, which would require a little more maintenance and upkeep. So, what that averaged out to be is, uh, for annual maintenance, would be, uh, $31,500 over the next, up until 2015. Okay? Divide that by the number of ERUs, and that would equal approximately $4.18 per ERU, for quarter.
For quarter.
For, for quarter, to cover, uh, annual maintenance. Okay? Then we looked at, uh, covering stormwater projects, which also are eligible, but the discussion there, um, focused on that some proj, projects in the future, which were, um, uh, some were expensive, $100,000, some of those costs may be offset by grants that we may be able to apply for. So that projected cost for projects might not be what we have in the CIP right now, as far as, uh, projected costs. So, instead of including all those projects in when that might not be their final cost, we looked at, uh, funding a small portion of those projects to have some money within the utility to offset project costs. So what we did was, we looked at the budget for stormwater projects in 2008, 2009, and that averaged to be $12,500. And again, we took that number and increased it by 4% a year to come up with about $13,500. So that portion, um, of the ERU would equal a dollar eighty. So, to fund annual maintenance over the next five years, or up until 2015, and some costs, a small amount of costs of stormwater, uh, projected stormwater, uh, projects, a total ERU per quarter would be $5.98. And so within the committee, the recommendation was to make it $6. Now, that would be for a single-family home, that would be $6 per quarter, $24 per year. And then, depending on the other uses, uh, if you're commercial and, or a large apartment complex, that would depend on the number of ERUs that you would have, based on your impervious surface. So, that was the recommendation, to proceed with that quarterly ERU, and what we're looking at is approval of that to take to a public informational meeting, which we, uh, we discussed to have at the next Public Works meeting. So if, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Interesting that you picked 4% as the estimated annual increase. I also looked at this from the, the history of this, only it was for two years.
Right.
Had you gone back, let's say, five years, and saw a 4% per annum increase, I'd be a little more okay.
Okay.
But I'm just, I'm kinda asking the question, is that realistic?
Um, it, it would be very easy for us to look at that if those past budget numbers were provided to us. So, it, if we could get those, we certainly could run that very quickly.
And the other thing...
Are you looking for approval of this tonight?
Uh, basically, we're looking, not that this will be the official rate at this time, but we're looking at this, uh, rate to present at the, the public informational meeting. In the end, the utility would have to be adopted by ordinance, and then a resolution is passed to set the rate. So between then, there's time for discussion and to look at this.
I think the idea is to, the next step in this is to run a number up the poll, if you will.
I'll see if anybody solicits.
And, see what kind of feedback we get, uh, like your comment, because this is a changeable number, we just, it's...
Right.
We bounced around Public Works as long as we could, and frankly, I'm not sure where we're gonna go with it, even at the board level, other than, um, you know, be talking a couple dollars one way or the other. I think it's a concept that we have to get in front of the people affected.
But I think Joe's question, my question too, is what are we being asked to approve tonight?
I think primarily to get it to a public...
You're probably asking approval of $24, so you can take it to the public meeting.
But, the, the proposed cost of 20... Go ahead, Mark.
I, the only thing I, the only caveat I didn't throw in there, if, it, I would rather see the board approve the meeting and the presentation, because any, if we, we gotta be careful how we state it, because if we go, the board approves $24, it sounds like that's the number they're encouraging, when I think we're looking for an opportunity to discuss that number, and with, and I'd like to do it without any bias or prejudice.
That's a good point, Mark.
Just a cup of coffee alone? Well...
That'd be two.
Well, did you guys already go?
Where you go, yeah.
In essence, in essence, as a reminder to anybody new here, or the board members, it's, and not to sound too political, but it's basically a redistribution of our taxes. It's, uh, the hope is, that's, it's not an additional tax. We do have stormwater costs each year, and they do come out of the, right, our, our general, our Public Works Fund, or our general fund, when we don't budget enough. And like, uh, like our sewer fund, which is another fund that we, we have some reserves built up, we're hoping to do the same with the stormwater fund, so that we don't have to go into the general fund for repairs.
I'd like to see a motion that we approve this as a concept, without having a dollar amount in it, because what I, what I'm anticipating is, we wanna start, let's say, high, and then as we build up, uh, as we build up a bank account, as it were, we may see that we're not using as much as we thought, maybe even be able to lower it. So that number can be adjusted periodically.
I, I don't, that's what I would like to see, so we can move on and, and rather, rather than belabor what number we have tonight, 'cause it's 10 to 10, none of us are equipped anymore to deal with that as well.
Make, make a...
Well, but I guess what I would point out is that we've discussed this at some length in Public Works, and there've been several reports that have been given to the full board, and Patrick has been very diligent in bringing the analytical portion of this forward. So the, the concept of the analysis, which does break down the maintenance, the projects, the quarterly costs, that's where the recommendation right now, that based on those numbers, and I would say that that's not high, I would say it's realistic, is $6. I don't know that ultimately that's the right number, but I got uncomfortable with the fact that the analysis that's been done by Cedar Corp. shows that if we're going to follow this formula, $6 per ERU per quarter is the right amount.
And how many, remind me again, how many ERUs I have for my house?
One, uh, single-family home, one.
Well, that's one, I, I knew that, but I just wanted to hear you say it.
George, I have, I don't know how many ERUs I have yet.
It's a long driveway.
Well, what would you do, do, would you prefer that we approve it as stated with that number, so it to, 'cause it can still be changed, even if we approve the concept and number tonight? Because that's the whole point of the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. I would agree with what Mark just said, that's the point of the public hearing. I think we need to take a recommendation to the public hearing and then get feedback.
And make a move.
To take it totally open-ended, I don't know that's appropriate. Yeah, Darrell had a good point, and I'm not running from Patrick's numbers, I mean, there was time spent on this. Exactly. And I'm willing to, to hang with him, but I...
Why don't you guys make a motion?
I'll, I'll... I'll move that we take, uh, is there a recommended motion in here by chance? Oh, great.
Off the top of your head.
I'll move that, um, we take the Storm Water Utility Fund concept and, and ER, ER... Us. Us. I was getting, and the, and the amount per ERU to the next Public Works meeting to have our, um...
That would be a public informational meeting.
Public informational meeting.
I'll second that.
I'm going to ask Becky to read that back.
Please don't, that could be embarrassing. It's kinda like looking in a mirror for me.
Okay, I have, that we take this Storm Sewer Utility Fund concept and the ERUs and the amount per ERU to the next Public Works meeting for a public information meeting.
I guess...
Was that what you said?
I guess it's like, so we have, right?
Can we add a second?
Did we?
Yes.
Oh.
You can color it up a little bit.
Patrick, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this, or clarification, or...
No, at, at this point, uh, it's informational, but in order to adopt it, we would have to have a public hearing to adopt the ordinance, and then after that, you would pass a resolution setting the rate. And we put the resolution within a rate, so that, um, you don't have to go through the, the public hearing process every time it, it needs to be adjusted.
Okay. Do you, um, have anything, any comments regarding Mark's motion?
I thought it was correct.
It was, okay. That's what I needed to hear. Anybody else? You're all smiling, okay.
No, I'm, I'm, uh...
I'm not.
How are we posting this notice for this particular item?
For the public information meeting?
Is it a public information meeting, or a public hearing?
It's gonna be...
It's not a public hearing, it's a public informational meeting.
At the Public Works meeting.
How are we going to...
Uh, the only reason I mention it is, you're gonna, the, um, not only can residents be a little, are gonna be affected by this, but I can pretty much guess the businesses are gonna want to at least know about it, and most of these guys are fairly busy.
You know, there's always minimum recommending, there's always minimum requirements for notices, but there aren't maximums, so it's kind of up, up to the board.
'Cause you're gonna have, in some of the larger land, um, uh, commercial spaces that are, might have a lot more interest in this than even the residential homeowner. And I don't know how we do anything different, I'm just suggesting if we wanna short-circuit some, um, some fallout later and get anybody down here, or at least let them know what we're talking about, realize what...
What some communities have done is, um, actually sent letters to the commercial, industrial, institutional property owners, notifying them that want the meeting.
That would be a very nice courtesy.
Because in, in this particular program, we're also, we're bringing in properties that haven't been taxed before. So it might be, it might behoove us to get to, you know, they may not be used to looking at notices for something that involves them, like, um, church parking lots, things like that, so I, yeah, school, it might be, it might be more than just a courtesy, you know, we probably should let them know.
Yes. Especially the school.
Or a church, or, you know, any, anybody who hasn't had to deal with us before, really, on this level.
And I'm also thinking of the apartments down here.
I'm telling you, I can pretty much tell you that most of the people I know that have a lot of asphalt are gonna wanna know about it.
Yes.
And not a month after it's passed. And a lot of them don't pay attention to the, the notice that the law never matter, Tom Thumb.
Just a quick question, would a development that has plotted lots that does not have buildings on it be included as the ERU?
A vacant lot would not, as long as the, the ground covers on it.
I know, I know, that's, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Gotta have asphalt or concrete. Do we have an easy way of being able to, of pulling all names and addresses of businesses in the municipality?
It's a little broader than that even, 'cause it's any non-residential.
Non-residential.
So would include churches? I, actually...
Well, we have that list that I transferred on to you.
Yes, and I added, I have, uh, divided out the single-family homes compared to, and the duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and everything beyond that. So we could tell from the, uh, there, from that, and I can provide that.
All right.
And I can, we can help draft a letter to send out.
Very good. We have a motion on the table, and, uh, our hand is moving quicker than I thought it would. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you.
Mark and Darrell. I think that's it for Public Works, is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
Public Safety.
No report.
No report.
Our Board.
I'll be quick.
You're right. No, I mean...
I can take longer if you'd like.
You don't care.
No, we had our, I got a response from the Railroad to the letter where we were just kind of feeling them out to see their, what they'd have to say when we mentioned the property that are interested in acquiring it, referring to, and sent the pictures from the bridge inspection of, you know, how it's, and the repairs needed, and the fact that it's an attractive nuisance and a liability for them, for people trespassing and other illegal activity. And the response I got back was, first they had given us the name of a different person who said that she was in charge now, she sent it back to the person that we had heard from before, and his response was, what was, so is the village going to make an offer? And do you have funding? Since this is not on our agenda as an item to discuss, I'm just updating you on what the Railroad had to say. So we need to figure out how we can proceed, either to try to make them an offer, or what we need to do next to move this forward.
As you indicated, as it's not an item on the agenda, you're looking at discussing...
Right. And then the other thing is, the dedication for the Chief Jansen Memorial Park will be on Saturday, October 30th, at noon, and the public is invited to attend. There'll be refreshments, and a short program, and that's really about all I have to say.
Thank you, Colleen. Mr. Zappa, do you have anything you'd like to say at this moment?
Moving to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
You know, I would have expected a second. Nobody seconded yet.
We don't have to make a motion.
Don't.
Okay, Joe.
George, you're just a traditionalist.
That's right. You just seconded, didn't you? All in favor of adjourning?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Need you back here, same time, same back station.